will be given by Pastor Gerald L. Smith, Senior, pastor of Greater Love Zion Church of God in Christ. If everyone would please silence your cellphone and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
With bowed heads, God, our Father, we thank you for this day and for this hour. We thank you, God, for your greatness and your goodness, for your loving kindness, for your tender mercy, for your outstretched hand. We declare that you have been good to us and we acknowledge who you are, for you are the strength and the source of our life. Thank you, God, for your preservation. Thank you, God, for all of your promises, your provisions, your protection, and even the proclamations in and over our lives. Now, God, as we meet on today in the city of Beaumont, God, we pray that minds would meet and agree. Let there be peace and let there be progress. In the name of Jesus, God, we resort to you that all may be well in this community and city. In Jesus' name we have prayed. Thank God and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Protim Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
All right, today we have four presentations. First, we'll have our communication update from the City of Beaumont Communication Department.
Good afternoon, everyone, and this week's city announcements. It's time to show the rest of the state how much pride we have here in Beaumont. The city is in the running to win the 2024 Scenic Texas City People's Choice Award. The annual contest is meant to recognize Texas communities that demonstrate a commitment to preserving and enhancing their natural beauty. You can help put Beaumont on the map and bring more tourists to our area by going to scenic texas.org and voting for Beaumont. Get some exercise while you take in nature by starting your Saturdays with some hot yoga. Now, this is like regular yoga, but it's outside in Beaumont. So if you're ready to burn some extra calories, head out to Cat Town Marsh Wetlands Education Center. It's free every Saturday morning starting at 9:30. The Fourth Annual Viva Beaumont Hispanic Heritage Festival is coming up Sunday, September 15th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Main Street Plaza in downtown Beaumont. Enjoy live entertainment, food trucks, family fun, including lucha libra wrestling and a human claw machine. It's free and open to the public, but guests are encouraged to bring lawn chairs and blankets. Up a whopping 223% in the last three years, pickleball is now the fastest growing sport in the nation, according to the Sports and Fitness Industry Association. And the city of Beaumont is helping avid picklers by opening the courts inside the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center on Gulf Street, so you can get in on the craze while getting out of the heat. The courts are open Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. We want to recognize one of our own for demonstrating what the city strives to be. Ms. Dewan Roberts is the recipient of the Heart of the City Award. She has worked with the city transit service for 32 years and was recently recognized for providing excellent customer service that was good-natured and helpful. Congratulations to Dewan and thanks for exemplifying the true heart of the city of Beaumont. And finally, a reminder, the city will be closed on Labor Day, September 2nd, so all of our hard-working employees can enjoy time with their families. And we hope you all have a happy Labor Day.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from Ms. Renata Mason with the Texas Division of Small Business Administration.
Sorry, Renata was unable to make it, so it's gonna be me. My name is Javier Kaltenko. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm a PIO for SBA. And as you know, we do have a declaration and therefore the county has been included in the declaration for the severe, sorry, for the hurricane barrel. So the Small Business Administration is the primary source of funds to pay for repairs or replacement costs not fully covered by the insurance. We are providing disaster loans to businesses of all sizes, most private nonprofit organizations, homeowners and renters as well. So we have two different types of loans. One for businesses. The first one is for any physical damages that they had, including their real estate, supplies, inventory, machinery, et cetera. We also have the Economic Injury Disaster Loan for those businesses, smaller businesses, who are having a hard time economically. So we want to make sure that they're able to make those payments to pay their rent, water, electricity, or even payroll. There's a limit up to $2 million, or it could be a combination of the two, up to $2 million. For homeowners, we also have a loan up to $500,000 to repair or replace their primary residence. If they have a secondary home, they can also, as long as they're using it as a business, they can also apply for a business loan. For homeowners and renters, we also have up to $100,000 to replace any personal property they lost. So it could be furniture, it could be appliances, or even a personal vehicle. Again, as mentioned, these are loans, so they need to be repaid back. And the interest rate right now for homeowners and renters is as low as 2.688%. For businesses, it's as low as 4% and 3.25% for nonprofit organizations. We do have a center that we have open in Orange. And, sorry, I just... Okay, sorry. Sorry, I just got here, so I apologize. I just know it's gonna be in Orange. I can provide that information if needed. So right now, the SBA has offered more than $180,000, $180 million in the whole disaster for this declaration. We, SBA, we don't look at just the... We want to make sure that individuals have, they are located in the one of the centers so they can be eligible for their loans. So as again, you know, we've mentioned Orange County, we, Jefferson County as well. They need to have a certain amount of... I'm sorry, I wanted to say the... We don't look at the credit score only. They have to be, it has to be acceptable to SBA, but also we want to make sure that those individuals are able to make the payments. There's other ways that they can use the SBA loan. For example, on a case-by-case basis, they may be able to qualify for refinancing. They may be able to also qualify for relocation. And we also want to make sure that when they rebuild, we want to make sure they rebuild more resilient. So therefore, SBA is also offering an additional 20% of the verifiable losses for mitigation purposes. So it doesn't have to be for any specific disaster. So it could be for any natural disaster that can happen in the area. That's what I have for now. And, you know, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you, sir.
I actually, I can provide it. Yes, I can provide that information.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next, we have a presentation from Mr. Tom Bell with Beaumont Main Street on the ongoing marketing efforts to attract new tenants and businesses in downtown Beaumont.
Hello.
Hello.
Good afternoon. Y'all doing all right today?
Sure.
Mayor, council. I've got John Lee with me today. He's one of our board members. And we've been working on some concepts to bring in some new business downtown with incubators and things like that. So when I'm through telling you everything else that's going on, I want John to speak about that and how maybe it would work to help fill up some buildings down here. Now we go to getting on the downtown. We have a lot of property down here that is available, but most of it isn't for sale. And I have investors all the time wanting to buy buildings and fix them up, but it's tough to find one that's for sale. And we have to, you know, tell them, please, you know, be patient. Maybe the people that have them for sale will change their mind or whatever, and we'll be able to do something. But one of the investors that I was talking to the other day, he's looking for a 7,000 or 8,000 square foot building that he can, you know, buy. And, I mean, we have driven around downtown for hours trying to figure out what we could do. And there's just no buildings that size that are available for them. And they don't want to rent. They want to buy a building and, you know, call it their own and do whatever. And I understand that. But at least we have people that are wanting to come downtown. Another one of the investors that we have talking to us has been working with us for, gosh, about two years. And this fellow is real, you know, he's... He's got big ideas and he's got some money, but he's talking to some people that own the old U.S. Attorney's Office. And it is a huge building, but he likes it. And he's talking to the owner. And it's for sale. And he's trying to work out something that if it works out for him, and I'm helping him, it'll be a lot of people that are gonna be in that building right downtown, right behind the post office. So we're keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that Mr. Austin, who owns the building, and this fella can work it out. And maybe we can fill that building up. And, you know, he's got some great ideas. And I think Greg likes those ideas, but it's a matter now of getting down to what he's gonna have to pay for and what we're gonna need to do with it. And we're keeping our fingers crossed. I have another group that is basically interested in the old workforce building, which is in terrible shape. But he kind of wants to get it and fix it up and make it work again. But there again, I don't know if the fellow that owns it will sell it to him. But if he would, this guy's ready to go and he's got the money. But we'll just try to see what we can do and see what happens. It's these kind of things that's hard to do. I've even had a couple of people call me in the last few months that are interested in the Hotel Beaumont. And I've said, "Well, you need to talk to Mike Patel and he might sell it to you." And I've given him the number. And I called Mike to see if he'd be interested in talking to a couple of them. And he said, "Sure, tell them to call me." So maybe something's gonna work out with those folks. It would be great to get that hotel back online and get some people, you know, fixing it up. It's a beautiful old building. It's historical. And at one time, we had it going pretty good and some weather kind of hurt us with a couple of hurricanes that we get on occasions. It just kind of, you know, dwindled down to where it's just falling apart now. And I'm worried about it. The Redemption Church is coming along pretty good. That guy's putting a roof on. He's, I think, adding on down at the end of the old Fatida Building. He, that's a good project. That's the size project that can go, you know, because it's affordable. It's not like the Edson Hotel, which is gonna be something that is gonna take somebody with a lot of money to come in and do something with it. But at least the energy company is running the electricity and it's taken care of. And homeless people hadn't gotten in it and broken windows and started tearing it up or anything like that. So, you know, it's up to Milt Pruitt to get a sales guy because he's handling the deal. And it's kind of the same way with the Enterprise and General Building. It's a big old building and, you know, it's gonna take somebody that really is wanting a big office in downtown. And, but it's leased for sale. And it could be something that could happen that would make things kind of work out to get some more folks downtown. Anyway, these kind of things, you know, come up and we do everything we can to put property owners together with people that are interested in property. We give tours a couple of times a year of downtown and tell people about the history of it and take them to buildings and show them the beauty of some of our old buildings. And they love it. And, you know, we get calls, "When's the next tour?" And we have one that's gonna be done this fall. And we've already got people signing up to come do it. But, you know, it's kind of like, I can't wave a magic wand and make something happen with the situation the way it is downtown right now. I mean, I'm trying the best we can. My board is always thinking of things. We talk about it a lot. And, you know, we put it on Facebook. We have a good Facebook thing. We've got 5,000 people that follow us. And we even have tours for children that we put them on buses and bring them downtown and let them go to the art museum and over to the Entergy Museum. And, you know, we try to teach them about our history and tell them that, you know, you live in a great town and here's some neat stuff. And they all love it and think it's great. We've kind of teamed up with our historical folks back here the last year to try to, you know, get things kind of moving again. And I'm kind of excited that the city is kind of wanting to come up with, and I think they are, coming up with some new rules. You know, people that aren't taking care of their buildings and trying to make things work out to where we can get some people to be responsible and take care of those buildings. I do have sad feelings about the Gilbert Building. It's something that I really would like for y'all to consider doing everything you can to save that building. I've even called Stephanie Dugan, who's with the National Development Corporation that has worked with us in the past. She's one of the people that helped put the Hotel Beaumont back together and get it going when the city owned it back in those days and develop the thing to where it could open again. She's smart. She's been around 30 years and knows what's going on. And I'm trying to get suggestions from her on what we can do to save the Gilbert Building. And she says that we need a Texas-registered engineering firm that she knows about them to come in here and take a good look at it. And they would be the people that'd be able to tell you whether or not you can save that building. And I think that it can be. I've been in a lot of cities in this country that have programs that have gone to places where buildings have burned down. I was in Baltimore, Maryland, a few years ago. And there was a hotel, I mean, a building that had burned down and only the sod in the front was standing. They had rods holding it up. And we went around the back of it and they dug out where the basement was and they were already putting a foundation back in it to come up with save that facade. And I never have seen what the end of it looks like because I left out and didn't have a chance to go back and see. But one of these days, I'm gonna go see what they did with that building. But I encourage y'all to try to, you know, have somebody that, you know, there are people here that know what they're doing, but these people do it. Stephanie and I have worked with a guy named Vince Hauser, who's an architect for us out of Houston. And he did a lot of work, you know, in Beaumont with buildings. He helped with a lot of stuff that was going on. And Jim Rushard's building, for instance, that he owns now, the old Lang Building. A lot of people thought that building was gonna fall apart and it wasn't gonna be, you know, safe to be in and all that. And Vince Hauser came in when Ben Bundy moved into it years ago and made an apartment and said, "There's nothing wrong with this building. It is solid as a rock." And it's something that, you know, thank God Jim bought it because he's gonna save it and do something with it. And we need more people like that doing these kind of things to get us to where we need to get back before I think people are just gonna start pouring into downtown and, you know, filling up some of these buildings. But it's just something that is, you just gotta stay after it and you gotta stay positive and do whatever you can. But we really appreciate y'all trying to do something about it. I think you're on the right track. If you need any help, let us know. We, you know, gave y'all a booklet a year and a half ago that had some great ideas in it. And I think Ms. Eggman has, you know, looked at it and has probably taken some ideas out of it in her writing her thing. And it's a team effort. And I think that we're here to help. And I would love it if we could get something going. I'm gonna let John say a little bit about the ideas that we have that he knows more about than I do. That's why I got him on the board. But he's a good guy and he's smart and he's with Lamar. And John, have a few words.
Well, anybody that doesn't know, I'm the Director of the Small Business Development Center at Lamar. And, you know, I'm in total support of the big projects that the city has going on and the things that Tom's trying to do. But we mostly work with clients that are really just getting started. There are a lot of people that are working to get something started. If you look from 2010 to 2019, the average number of businesses started in Jefferson County was 1,565 a year. Since then, it has gone to where in 2021, it was 3,600, 2022, 3,200, 2023, about 3,100. It has almost doubled just in the last few years. There's a lot of people trying to get things started and a lot of them need office space. So what we want to do is try to provide that. So work with some business owners that have some space that would, they would be able to lease out where it could be affordable, be on a month-to-month basis or like a 12-month lease, but no big penalty for somebody whose business just doesn't make it and they have to move on. But an incubator to get these, give the people a space to get started. If we can do that, I think we're gonna get a lot of jobs downtown. These are people that can afford to get office space on Dallin Road and it wouldn't make any business sense for them to do so. But if they could come into a place where it was affordable and made sense, then they would do so. And just having those people in proximity to one another builds that spirit of entrepreneurship. And I think we can, we can get the SBDC involved to help mentor them. We can get Lamar involvement to help them if they need that type of assistance. And, but I'm talking to some local business owners to see if we can find a building that suits those needs. And we'd like to have one that's office space and then one that's more of a light manufacturing incubator. We don't have as much tech as maybe Houston or Austin has, but we got a lot of people in this area that know how to work with their hands and are very good with that and have ideas of things that they want to make happen. And we just need to give them a space to let them do so. So we'll let Tom work on the big stuff and I'll work on the small stuff and we can see if we can get some more jobs downtown.
Well, I just, you know, one of the things that is happening lately that I am pretty excited about, I really think that the second floor of the first city building would make a really neat place for people to come that maybe it's a small insurance guy. He's just a one-man shop, but he has a gal that works for him or a guy or whatever. And they have an office up on that second floor, which is really beautiful when you walk in it. And there's just surrounded in the middle of that floor are offices, single offices with a little place for a secretary to be out front. So there could be several businesses that are just one man and one gal shops in there. And you could utilize the waiting room to where when it was time for you to go see this person in this building, I mean, that room or this room, you would have it. There's a boardroom up there that you could have a board meeting in. We do that with the first city building. Our office is not big enough anymore to have our board meetings, so we use the boardroom on the fifth floor. And it's a kind of a partnership. And I think that the owner of my building is probably, you know, he's got some furniture up there he's storing right now. But I think if we can convince him to open it up and let it be a little satellite business thing, I think John and I could probably get that thing filled up pretty fast. So that's our next little project that we're kind of working on. But if you know anybody that has a single office they want with, you know, the amenities of what's there with a waiting room and a boardroom and all that, let us know. That's part of our deal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Lastly, we'll have a presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget and the CIP.
Mayor, we're gonna do that before item number one. Isn't that what you want to do?
All right, we're gonna go move through the...
We'll do public comments, consent agenda, and then we'll do that item before item number one.
All right. At the close of the meeting today, City Council will recess into executive session to consider matters related to, related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Mardi Gras of Southeast Texas, and Walid Bassa, 7705 Water Edge, eminent domain for the acquisition of a land for an exclusive water line easement at the intersection on the property described as seven and a half feet wide exclusive water line easement out of Lot 8A, Section 5, Sienna, The Crescent on Walden Phase 1, situated in Charles William League Abstract Number 59 in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. And then Caleb Finner versus City of Beaumont and Christopher S. Boone calls number B210244. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda and regular agenda items, 1 through 10, or any other topic. We will have a public hearing on item number nine. And you can only speak either, if you're speaking about the Gilbert Building, on nine, you can speak in public comments or you can wait and speak during the public hearing, but you can't speak in both of those. So just keep that in mind. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. And please be reminded that myself nor council can respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from our office will contact you.
I will ask when I call your name, if you want to wait until the public hearing for item number nine, you may do so. Let me know. If not, you can come to the podium. Jason Marshburn?
All right, Jason Marshburn, 1070 Monterey Drive here in Beaumont, Texas. And I want to speak today. First of all, I want to commend the staff on setting up the Fourth of July celebration. That was with Event Center. That was a great, great, I wish we had more of those type of events to bring people downtown. I know next month we'll have another Independence Day or from Spain, you know, the Hispanic celebration. But I wish every month we had some celebration downtown, such as, you know, the Hispanic or the tree lighting or the Fourth of July and these sort of things. And that should bring more people downtown. As far as like office space, you know, every city in the country has too much office space. I mean, that's why a lot of these buildings are vacant because through automation and... I mean, that's why a lot of these buildings are vacant because through automation and basically downsizing, we really have too much office space. And we need to figure a better way to utilize that space or just maybe redo the buildings and just build from scratch. But I also think, you know, as a taxpayer, you know, as far as like vagrants being responsible for burning buildings and this sort of thing, that's really up to the property owner's responsibility. I mean, as a taxpayer, I should not have to use our tax dollars to secure somebody else's property. And that's really a lame excuse to me to say that, you know, vagrants came by a building even though it was unsecure, you know, they burned the place down. I mean, that shouldn't be on us, the taxpayers. That should be on the property owner to have cameras, to have security, electricity, you know, the whole shebang. Because, you know, we spend way too much money on crime and fighting crime. And it's kind of on the own property owner to make sure we have that done. Because I mean, any city will have a fair amount of unhoused people. Let's just part live in the city. I mean, there's nothing much we can do about it, you know. I mean, that's just part, any city you go to, they'll have unhoused people, you know, maybe they do set fires, I don't know, you know. But that's just, I mean, that's just part of life, you know. And that's something up to the property owner to make sure they got barricades. Any window's broken, let's fix it. You know, just the James Q. Wilson broken window theory, let's just fix these windows. That's what James Q. Wilson says. That's what, you know, the broken, one broken window leads to two broken windows, three, four. I mean, that's what's happened. A lot too many broken windows just exist. And, you know, the whole thing about Beaumont is we haven't grown. You know, this is the only city in Texas over the past six years has not gained population. We've got to figure a reason why we, why are we the only one? You go to Tallahassee, you go to Abilene, you go to, you know, Midland and Odessa, Bay Co., I mean, all these are mid-sized towns. All of them have grown, but not us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Teresa Goodness.
Good afternoon. Teresa Goodness, 985 19th Street in Beaumont. I wanted to have some comments about the vacant building registry proposal. I want to commend the city for working on this, Ms. Eggman especially. She came and talked to us here at the Historical Commission and explained some of the proposals and the way it works in other cities. I do think we need all the tools we can get to work on this problem downtown. As a member of the preservation community, I'm very interested in preserving our historic buildings, our historic downtown district, which is on the National Register. We have to do something to preserve our buildings. And when they're vacant and not secured, obviously that leads to some severe problems as we've experienced recently. So I'm in support of the city adopting some kind of vacant building registry to help with safety and securing the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Trendbath.
Jennifer Trendbath, 2020 Chevy Chase Lane, Beaumont. Thank you for the opportunity to lend my support to the adoption of a vacant building ordinance. Though I work in historic preservation, please know that the opinions I'm sharing are my own. We spent far too many years in Beaumont fruitlessly hoping that the owners of vacant properties would decide that the time is right to rehabilitate the structures. In the roughly 20 years since Crockett Streets project, we've seen other cities across Texas evaluate and enact a variety of ordinances that have bolstered their downtown preservation, many to the success of the downtown, which subsequently is the success of the citizens. Historic preservation achieves its fullest function when it's enacted not at the hands of only private investors or only municipalities, but as partnerships. Quoting from the City of Grapevine's Historic Preservation Ordinance mission statement, "As a matter of public policy, the protection, preservation, and enhancement of districts and landmarks of architectural, archaeological, cultural, and historic importance is necessary to promote the economic, cultural, educational, and general level of the citizens." As the City of Beaumont plans to proceed with the public-private partnerships such as the Downtown and Convention, Hotel and Convention Center, I encourage you to also proceed with this first step towards addressing the root cause of the blight and decay in downtown. The City of Beaumont has an uphill climb in terms of overcoming negative connotations of downtown. And the first step is never easy, but our recent events have shown us that at this point in time, it has become necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kayla Hoffpower.
Hello, thank you guys for being here today. My name is Kayla Hoffpower. I'm a stylist at the Loft Hair Studio downtown for almost 10 years now. I come before you today to address a pressing issue that has been plaguing our community for far too long. The Gilbert Building, owned by Mr. Tom Flanagan, located on Pearl Street, has been a source of safety concerns due to falling debris for years before the recent fire. It is crucial that action is taken to hold the owner accountable for maintaining his property and ensuring the safety of our community. One of the key questions we must ask ourselves is what will it take for the city to hold Mr. Flanagan to the same standards that they hold small businesses to? Small businesses are required to adhere to strict regulations and maintain their properties to high standards, which I'm proud to say that our building owner does a very good job of. Yet it seems that a larger, that the larger property owners in town are not held to the same level of accountability. This double standard must be addressed to ensure the safety and well-being of all of our residents, businesses and businesses in our community. The closed streets surrounding the building have not, have not only prevented access to local thriving, mostly female-owned businesses in my building, but have also created an eyesore and skepticism of safety for patrons of the high-end salons and restaurants and boutiques in the area. The crumbling building in our windows is a stark contrast to the level of pride, professionalism in stately chandeliers that hang above me as I work. This has resulted in a loss of foot traffic for the entire building and surrounding businesses, leading to a decline in clientele that has taken me nearly 10 years to establish. When our small businesses fail, our very real family suffer and it is my duty to protect and support my family. Furthermore, the road closures have caused parking issues and traffic confusion for patrons and employees of the businesses in the area, further compounding the challenges of missed and late appointments. As a stylist that depends on appointments, this directly affects my day-to-day operations and my bottom line. It is imperative that the city council takes the decisive action to hold the owner of the Gilbert Building responsible for finally demolishing this problem for the safety and prosperity of our downtown community, as he's shown for at least the last 15 years. He's not going to do much about it. We can continue to turn, we can't continue to turn a blind eye to the neglect and disregard for the well-being of our residents and businesses. So I urge you to take action and compel Mr. Flanagan to do the right thing, or please do it yourself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brent Kuhn. She's going to get him.
Okay.
Call the next name and give the option to speak after that person.
Yes. Wendell Wingate.
Mayor and council and the pastor. I'm Wendell Wingate, 1155 West Virginia Street, Beaumont, Texas. Born and raised. Have two issues that I'd like to present you with today. The first is, I would think is the most important, and that is a sidewalk to be extended on Virginia Street, past the railroad track up to Kennet. You have quite a few students and elderly that walk that area. And they're forced to be in a two-lane area where there's a lot of wrecks that happens there. You replace quite a few stop signs because they're very negligent in their driving, maybe under the influence or just multitasking, as people like to say. So to have a sidewalk to where the younger people can walk and not be in danger would be a great plus. The other thing is, in 1994, I survived a police hate crime here in Beaumont, Texas, on Washington Boulevard, at my company and my residence, which was a veterinarian hospital. I established my brand as a professional dog trainer here in the southeast Texas, known out throughout Texas, trained dogs in Georgia and Louisiana. When that incident happened, it's nothing can be done now. The greatest thing, my teeth was damaged. I, I wasn't charged with a crime. I was arrested, never, you know, they settled for no contest. Mentally, physically, and spiritually, it took 30 years for me. I'm just now in a position where I can present this to some, to you. And I know I'm not looking for anything monetary, other than it would be nice to have my smile back. As I move forward, people my age are retiring. I'm having to reinvent myself. I'm not hostile anymore. I was very upset. I became homeless, broke, deadbeat dad, all of that. But through the grace of God, I stand in front of you right now, redeemed, rehabilitated, and ready to get on with the second part of my life. That's why I came here today for those two. If I was to say which was the most important, it would be the sidewalk. That's, that would be the most important thing that I think the city could do.
Thank you, Mr. Wingate.
God bless.
Tony Carrier.
My name is Tony Carrier. I live in Beaumont. I don't want to give my address. I do live in Beaumont, I'm a citizen. I'm here today because it's been weighing heavy on my heart about the homeless condition that's in the country, period. But namely here, because this is where I live. I advocate for them today because I think it's very important that we all consider what we are neglecting, which is our homeless community. Mayor, you said that, that they could come here and cool off and they can go to the library. Well, we know that's not true. And if it was true, how would they get here? You know? You know, I have a degree in anthropology, social culture, and that's just a discipline where we look for problems in society and trying to find ways to solve them. Yes, I know this is a small city. That mean your problem would be smaller, you know. We have to do something. With this heat condition, these people deserve food, shelter, and somewhere to, you know, to take a shower, at least, at the least. How can we go home into our, into our clean beds and go to sleep at night? It's hard for me. I don't have to be here. I'm here because I need to be here. Now, I can, I only have three votes that I can vote for, and that's the councilman for my ward, the mayor, and at-large, okay? And I assure you, in May, I will, my vote, one vote will count because you guys, you guys all know about one vote, one vote Bobby. I'm sure you know about that, you know? And I'm just very, very upset. It's disheartening. It's just sad that we can walk past people every day and just think that they, that they're nothing and they're human beings. If we can get a doggy park, how about a human park? Make that make sense to me. I don't understand. We were bragging about a doggy park? Come on now. These people are going to die in this heat. I know because I go out and I feed and I bring water and I bring ice to these people. I don't have any money, but I can make some kind of something, you know, instead of passing out cookies. Come on, give me a break. I feel so bad and, you know, I was angry, but I'm not angry now. I'm just hurt and I wish that we could do better. We, we should follow up on the people that we have given money to, like some other place and the Salvation Army and see what they are doing. Because how could the air conditioner be broke at Henry's place? You got money, fix it. I mean, come on. And even the people that can't get there, we should bus them there and get them there. It's our responsibility. We don't, we're going to have a bunch of dead people in this city. Or even at, I mean, they've been finding some dead, I'm sure there are homeless people. You know, some have been so decomposed, you know? And like I said, I am very, very upset, you know, at this. You know, it's just bad. We could, we have buses, we can go get them, go pick them up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wilmera Low.
Good afternoon, Wilmera Low, 5925 Meadowview Road. To the mayor, city council. I stand before you this, today, to talk about, well, to discuss, as the city attorney so eloquently put it at the council's last meeting, the council has to govern itself. We know the actions that was taken by the city council, we feel that they were in violation of chapter 42-001, section four of the state law, by putting stipulations and requirements on the general manager's choice of appointment for chief of police. Don't get me wrong, I think we got a great chief of police. Ain't what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the policing or the city council doing the right thing. It's time out to say that the, the attorney general will only give you a slap on your wrist if you choose to violate the state law. We feel, I feel, that spending $30,000 on a consulting firm and then not accepting their recommendation can be seen as a waste of taxpayer money, especially if the reason for not accepting the recommendation are not clearly justified or communicated to the public. The council should ensure that their decision-making process is transparent and that they are accountable to taxpayers. This includes clearly explaining their decision and the rationale behind, behind their decisions, particularly when the taxpayer money is involved. Now, I've said time and time again, and I think it bears to be said again, the city council by its own, own action constitutes and fosters an atmosphere of distrust between the constituents across the city. We need you all to do better. And if you don't feel that you, that there is no redress for the citizens through our legal system, but we know that all hope is not lost, there can be and there will be redress in May of 2025. Since, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, Charlie Crabbe.
And Mr. Williams and staff, my name's Charlie Crabbe. I live at 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas, 77706. It's another nice day in Beaumont, our town. Summer heat has been brutal lately. We did have some nice rains in June and July. Mr. Williams, have them look at the Azaleas, new Azaleas out on, at, on Delaware at the, at the Heights Park. They're, they're wilting. That wasn't on my agenda here, but let's see. We just drove by a few earlier today. City council did the right thing in asking the city manager to seek out a police chief City council did the right thing in asking the city manager to seek out a police chief candidate from the ranks of our, our current police officers. All city executives should be training their best person in their group to be promoted to, to their top job. In the event of an unforeseen happening as well as retirement, I believe it is a common practice in, in businesses to promote from within. It was a shame the Gilbert Building laid vacants so very long to allow vandals time to create a fire. This type of vandalism needs to be stopped. A reward of two to three thousand dollars should be established to bring the vandals to justice. Because I imagine the, the fire department spent quite a bit of money fighting that fire. The new Pine Street pump station sure must have some giant pumping equipment by the size of the pipe that is visible. I guess we're gonna need that supply here one of these days. My sister Sharon McKenzie drove us by the Beaumont High School demolition and turned on Russ Street. What a, what a nice surprise. Russ has received an asphalt covering. I was, hopefully Angelina would have the same thing, but we got there just the same old rough street. Angelina's one of my requested streets to get a topping. On the world scene, the Israelis, I hope, on the world scenes, I hope the Israelis get a peace settlement and get the hostages back. Ukrainians have surprised Putin.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Give me just thirty seconds. Okay, thank you, folks.
Dean Tucker. You want the public hearing? Okay. Melissa Bradford.
Melissa Bradford, ten eighty-five Washington DC. As you all are aware, I am a victim of a crime organized by the one hundred and thirty-sixth district judge and the one hundred and seventy-second district judge. So as I've mentioned before, I want to reflect on these hearing transcripts. And there was some information that was sent to me over the weekend. I'd like to get into that first. This is the amount of the appraisal award that was awarded to myself and my mortgage company to repair my damaged home, total of eight to six thousand dollars. These judges are trying to award a majority of this money, thirty-seven thousand and something dollars of it, to these attorneys on Eleventh Street for one month of doing nothing on my case. And all they've done was just made a few phone calls. That was about it. Plus their pro se litigants represented themselves. And I got tons of recordings where these lawyers are saying, Judge Wertham should not, could not award these attorney fees because they are pro se litigants representing themselves. Therefore, they are not entitled to attorney fees. They will actually have to hire an attorney to represent them to even try to claim attorney fees. And that is the Supreme Court ruling. This, this is case law. So these transcripts, let me reflect on that. Was one hundred and seventy-sixth district judge was caught red-handed plotting against me, bootlick, telling these plaintiffs to my case that they have a potential to make my situation worse, like he was classically taught after law school. And these are not even the full transcripts. There's a lot of them that are still missing. And as you can see, a lot of these hateful comments that are very destructive and harmful to the black community, I will say, the comments have lines drawn across them. What is wrong with this mic? Yeah, they have lines drawn across them. So I was sent this information to show everything that's being said that's being hidden. Well, his court reporter, the one hundred and seventy-sixth district judge, had her to draw these lines through these hateful comments to try to hide the information. And as you can see, they are still very visible. They're engaging in espoite communications, holding these hearings without me even being there to defend myself. And even the, the plaintiffs to my case and the insurance company, Texas Farmers, who's also engaged in this fraudulent scheme, they're even saying these licensed sponsors attorneys should not even be in my case. They're against it. And I'm going, that's gonna quote what they're saying. Where is it at? She said, I thought this was part of the plea to this jurisdiction type decision, that it's not supposed to be a part of this case. And then a lawyer goes, Your Honor, what Mrs. Such and Such is saying?
Ma'am.
Addie Allen.
Good afternoon. My name is Addie Allen, nine six nine five Gross, Beaumont, Texas. To council, mayor, city manager, and all other officials. Just standing here, number one, for an update on sidewalks at Beaumont United. As you know, the schools have started and they still don't have sidewalks. I understand that by December, that's supposed to be done. Hopefully it will. The other thing is sidewalks in the Amelia area. If you drive through there on McLean, there are sidewalks that go dip in and out. Kids do horseplay. It's so close to McLean. I don't know who checked the sidewalks when they were done, but it's a travesty. The other thing is, I've stood here many times talking about the hurricane season. We are now in it. We've seen where communication channels have been shut down. Things have happened that's different because it's not always water, it's not always rain. I've asked the city council, the city manager assured me he'd look into it. An alarm system in the Dallas area, they have that. People don't know what's going on if you can't, if they are out of the loop. An alarm system in the budget would be better than lives lost because lives are lost during the hurricane seasons, for whatever reason. So I'd like to see that, you know, we look at it. You've looked at it before. I was told it was too costly. What's more costly than a life in your community? Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's all I have, mayor.
All right. Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve. Seconds.
There is a motion, motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion is carried. At this point, we will be having the presentation presented by Mr. Williams regarding the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget and CIP.
Thank you, mayor and council. Once again, it's that time of the year to where we present the budget. According to city charter, the city managers present a, a proposed fiscal year budget to the council before the new fiscal year starts. We've been working on this process now for a few months. And we've had workshops with city council and we've had lots of meetings with staff. So today we're ready to talk, to, to present a proposed draft to you. You go to the next slide. We're at the point where it's typical things that are presented in this presentation. We'll talk about some accomplishments, accomplishments, excuse me. Give you a overview of the budget, talk about property taxes, tax rates, debt service, general funds, revenues and expenses, water and sewer funds, wastewater funds and solid waste funds that highlights. And then we'll give a bit of an overview of the community investment plan fiscal year two thousand five through two thousand twenty-nine. Budget calendar, a quick overview of the budget calendar. On August sixteenth, we posted a draft on the city's website. So anyone who wants to go and view the proposed budget, it's on our website. Today, we'll do some key things in the budget process. The city manager will present the proposal, but also you'll be asked to schedule public hearings on the budget, tax rate, and a capular program. Also today, you'll be looking at a record vote on the proposed tax rate. You'll be able to vote on that tax rate. Remember, whatever tax rate you set, you'll be able to lower it, but you won't be able to raise it when you get ready to adopt a tax rate. So at this point, whatever you set today, you can lower but not raise it. This will be done in the form of some resolutions and actions you take today to receive the proposed budget and, and a five-year C O P. To be clear, today is not adoption of the proposed budget. It's just a presentation to you for the budget. This process will go all the way through September seventeenth and wish on that date, you'll be asked to adopt a budget. We'll be able to amend it, adjust it up until that time. And at that time, you may be, you may lower that proposed tax rate that I talked about. Of course, anytime during the year, the council has the ability to amend the budget. So whenever you set the budget, you still could come and amend it. Next slide. Yes, you have to. Every, well, budgeting can be pretty mundane and pretty dull. So every year I find some video to show this about a minute or so to, to lighten up and simplify the budget process for people to understand what it means by budgeting. And Tina hopes you can show the short video. Maybe you can come back to it or something. While she's doing, can you see? Okay, no, no there. While she's doing that, I'll continue to talk a little bit. And, and given the proposed budget, I want to talk a little bit about twenty-three, twenty-four, about some of the successes we've had as a, as a council, as a city manager, as a city this past year. Yes, I'm ready. Can't see it. I promise you, we rehearsed this several times. If you can't get it, just, just continue with the presentation. Next slide. Did you put the mouse over there? Well, I'll talk about some of the successes while she's getting that back up. Last year, we lowered the tax rate. That was the fourth year in a row that the city of Beaumont has had a lowered tax rate. This year, we'll make the fifth year in a row that we will lower the tax rate, proposed tax, offer proposed tax rate. You created a downtown terrace which provides opportunities downtown, economic development opportunities downtown, which creates a fund to use dollars for the well-being of not just downtown, but all areas of the tax increment reimbursement zone. Parks improvement, you did projects in Rogers, Charlton Pollard, Combest, Babes Harriers, Central Park and several other parks downtown, major, major park improvements. As far as strategic plan implementation, basically everything we're doing almost is part of the strategic plan implementation, what we're doing. Parks master plan is started. You've appointed citizen committee. Staff has appointed a committee and half an associate is working on that for sure. We did creation of a beautification fund, which people can voluntarily donate to a fund for beautification, planting of trees, et cetera, plant flowers around town for that. Last year, fund balance in that budget was about five point one million over required fund balance amount. We will improve upon that this year in this budget we're proposing. So we're, that's a goal. Last year, or this existing year, Rogers and Sprout Park got pavilions. Five five five, five 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 Main Street was demolished. It's currently demolished. We have a little bit of work, of work to do there. And then that will, the fencing will be removed and it'll be available to the public. Sidewalk repairs, we heard mention of sidewalks. Council designated one million dollars for sidewalks last year. And this year, we're putting more money into sidewalks and we wanted to do a sidewalk plan to do a comprehensive, take a comprehensive effort on sidewalk activities around town. Fourth, street rehabilitation. A lot of people were happy with, to see that major thoroughfare done. Homeless camp ordinance, you'll consider one of those tonight. We're working on. And physical responsibility was a big deal. And stable bond ratings, a big, 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 important thing for a city. And we got a bond regrading. We got two bond regradings this year. And the last one was a, a double A with the stable outlook. And it was good to get that stable outlook. It had not been a part of that bond rating in the past. So things are stable in, in, in the bond rating companies' eyes for us. Pay classification plan, which was adopted, put together by Evergreen and was implemented last year. Rogers Dog Park and we put together the artificial, artificial intelligence committee, which is a, a big deal for us to stay up to speed on what's happening. Next slide. A few more. Of course, the five-year C I P was put into play. We did staff mandatory customer service training. Our legislative agenda, although it was adopted the year before, it was implemented throughout the year. We used the document whenever we met with elected officials, state officers, federal officials. And so they would know the things that are important to Beaumont and we went through that. We had a city accident reduction program. Our city attorney's office did an excellent job in getting our accident rate down into a good place for us. Mentioned the beautification program. We did some things at the water plant, which generates electrical improvements that can be quite expensive and those things were done. As far as, as a part of our, one of our comes with our joint meeting with the B I S D was talking about mental health. And we put together mental health, health focus group, where we work with B I S D and Lamar and other collaborators in town to come up with that program. And tonight, the downtown code enforcement effort is certainly in the forefront. And we put together a municipal court amnesty warrant program. There are some other things to decide, to decide there. I won't go each one of them. But lots of equipment, a lot of things done. Next slide. Council priorities for twenty twenty-five. And, and our workshop, each one of you gave us your ideas of what was important to use of physical responsibility for the, or for the city. And some of you gave it to us in writing, and these are the ones that came out. And this is how they ranked. Quality of life was first, fiscal responsibility was second, public safety, third, and infrastructure was fourth. And what's ironic, these four were the top last year. They ran a different audit last year, but they were the top ranked things according to the city council. So this budget is built around these priorities as identified by city council. Next slide. This year, some of the priorities in the twenty twenty-five budget, city comprehensive plan. This, this is a plan that identifies the development, how the city develops. It's very important to the development of a city. We're fortunate to look like we're gonna get a grant for this and we won't have to expend city dollars. We're looking at approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant we've been preliminarily notified that we're gonna get. And speaking of that, the grant coordinator, grant writer, we've gotten feedback from this council, in particular councilman Turner, about we need somebody to go out and find those funds. So we've included that in this budget. Last year, we funded the FUSIS and Real Time Crime Center, which has been a great asset for this city. And this year, we're starting to staff in it. So this budget includes four people for real-time center analysts. This, this will be civilian employees that will work in the Real Time Crime Center. Economic Development Manager, we just Economic Development Manager, we just created an economic development position within the city that's office, office within the city. They'll be working with the Chamber of Commerce, but we'll have a contact here at, uh, City Hall or any company, whether they are looking to relocate in the Beaumont or they're currently in Beaumont and want to talk about economic development. And for a second, come talk to, uh, Ms. Christina Loki, who works for us now. Food Truck Park, that was identified in our, um, strategic plan and also it's included in our C I P. So the initial dollars for the creation, design and, and any engineering for that will is in this year's budget. We've had a lot of discussion about employees living in the city. Uh, so there are some dollars in here for incentives for uh, police and fire employees who want to relocate to move within the city of Beaumont. So there are dollars in here for, for that. And demolition for downtown buildings, you know. We, we made the effort with the code enforcement efforts, but if we get to the point where the city has to do some things, there are substantial dollars included in here for the city to be able to do some programs. Recreation Program Coordinator, uh, we're gonna get this position to work with our youth initiatives, with our flag football programs with our basketball program, et cetera. We're gonna partner with our community liaison. They're gonna work with the community liaison to do these programs, those youth initiatives, and we're excited about that. Uh, police, fire, M S capital equipment, tons of equipment will be coming through in this budget. Uh, chatbot citizen portal. I talked a little bit about the A I committee and one of the things they've recommended is that chatbot, which basically replaces a lot of person, but it's really efficient and costs a lot less. So we'll be implementing that into our three one one system this year. Citizens Fire Academy, Chief White and his people thought that was important to be able to do that. Fire Academy and then Lexa Poe Fire Department Accreditation. We want to get our fire department accredited, but not just the fire department, but our police department. We have money in here to get them both accredited. It's organization. It's a great thing for these departments to have, and we look forward to getting them accredited.
Kenneth, would you like for questions now or?
You can, it'd be better at the end, but you can ask now. You can ask now.
Oh, I just wanted to know, um, on the, uh, I'll wait till the end. I'm writing them out.
It's okay. Next slide. And we're cre- increased reserve, I talked about that. Where do we go? Did you change lines? Okay, okay, twenty twenty five budget overview again. When we started this process, we talked to council about a zero based budgeting. Way of putting this budget together, this was new for the city of Beaumont where we started, where it's from zero, each department, and they came back and had to justify their spending and what they wanted within their budget. While there was the first time we did it, we have some things to work on. It did allow us to identify uh, some things that we didn't need to continue doing that were obsolete. And so we were able to take those dollars and real, reallocate them into different projects and different processes. So we're excited about that and getting those dollars. This budget maintains the same level of service, but well, it indeed increases services for the city of Beaumont. It just does not status quo here. You'll be able to do a lot of good things. I mentioned earlier about the tax rate. This proposed budget will lower the tax rate for the fifth year in a row in Beaumont. Beaumont, while we see it is not growing, the assessed values have grown, which is able, enabled the tax rate to, to decrease over a period of time. We've got increases in the solid ways and all of our funds, solid ways, joint fund, uh, solid waste funds in our reserves. That's important. That's important to this council. I heard that last year, so we're working to make sure as one of our strategic plan goals is to enhance the, the financial stability of this city. Quality of life, which was a fair important to this council. Youth initiatives are included in this budget. Touched on a parks plan I've touched on and then the efforts of the homelessness and the sidewalks I mentioned. And supports economic development. Next slide. Get into some of the meat and potatoes here. This is a, gives you a historical look at our property tax rates here in, uh, Beaumont. As you see in twenty one, it was seventy one cents and thi- this year we're proposing a point six five nine six rate. Last year was point six eight one four. So we're proposing about two, two and a half cent decrease in the rate. Uh, of course, you know that we'll be looking at adopting the folder approved rate, which raises more revenue. So anytime it raises more revenue than the year before, uh, you have to have to have a public hearing and, and adopt that. Now, what this does is anyone who's property tax goes up, they will pay more taxes, but if your property assessed property taxes stay the same or lowers, your tax liability, uh, tax assessment goes down. So while that's a six, six point, point six five nine six, excuse me. You could possibly have a reduction in your rate for the two, it's according to how your property was assessed with the tax assessors office. Uh, another note, looking at this slide, if you look at the general column over there, that's actually M and O maintenance and operations. Those, that's the amount of a tax rate that we can spend on operating this city, maintaining it. And you see that it's at point four eight seven six four. And if you look back, you know, even to two, two thousand twenty three, that's less. That's two and a half cents less or so than then. So you're actually having less of a tax part portion of your tax rate going toward maintenance and operations than you did two years ago. So while you're looking at a tax rate, actually what you have to spend on maintenance and operation tax rate is lower. So if there's any of that, your debt service this year drops a bit. Too. So that, that enables us to drop it, but people have to realize you're spending less of your tax rate on maintenance and operation this year than you did two years ago. Next line. Assess values, assess values, you see in twenty twenty four, we're about ten billion, four twelve. This year, what we got from the tax office was ten billion, eight eighty three, which is about a four hundred and seventy million dollar uh, assessment increase. You know, while that's not outstanding, it's good, strong growth for the city. And if you look back to twenty twenty three, look between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, the sets of ages increased over one billion dollars in that one year. And it's kind of like every other year thing. If you look at it, then you go back to the next year, it's about six hundred million. Then if you go back to twenty twenty one, between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, that assessed value has increased about one billion during that time period. So I don't know what the tax district or assessors doing and the methodology, but it seems to be a pattern on how it's, it goes up. Seems to be a billion one year, then about anywhere from four to five hundred million the next year. Next slide. Uh, property tax collection, collections. This came up during one of our workshops. And what we're proposing to collect that is a ninety seven percent, uh, rate. And we talked with the tax office and they said that they had quite a few judgments and question and people protested their valuations, et cetera. And have only paid what they think they owed. Typically, it should be higher than ninety seven percent. If you look at the history of it, ninety nine, typically it should run in the high ninety nines. Uh, average for a city. Uh, here, here's been around ninety nine, ninety eight percent, but ninety seven is low. And I did some quick math from what we did, it, that, that, that equals to about three million dollars for us or more, you know, more than that. So we need to get those taxes collected if at all possible. Next slide. This is just a historical look at, at debt through twenty forty five. Uh, you see your, your principal, yeah, I guess your total, your debt, the highest debt kind of peaks in twenty thirty three. You'll be issuing debt before the end. Of course, it'll be, um, timed out as to pay more debt on the back end. Of course, the council doesn't want to obligate future councils to heavy debt requirements, but you'll still have to issue some debt going forward. One of the things we did get dinked on during our audit, uh, audit, uh, uh, discussions with the bond rating agencies, uh, where they thought our debt ratio was a little high. So we've got to work on getting our debt ratio lower. Next slide. Next slide. Uh, general fund revenues, uh, general funds, kind of the meat and potatoes of, of the budget. You know, it pays for your basic things like police, fire, parks, planning and zoning, et cetera. It doesn't have so much its own major revenue source, so it's funding mostly to taxes. As you can see here, sales taxes and property taxes lead the way and what we bring in here with industrial payments coming in third, uh, for that. Next slide. Let's look at a pie chart. This gives you a pie chart view of, of our revenue sources for the general fund. You can see that property taxes and sale taxes are even thirty one percent. They both bring in about thirty one percent of your revenues for general fund, which is a good thing for a city. It's good for not, to not be too reliant on one or the other. It kind of gives you a little bit of recession proof. It, it, it protects you from big swings in the economy or just disasters sometimes with property, if property values take a drastic drop. So that's a positive for Beaumont for those sales tax and property taxes to, to, to be about equal. You don't see that much, but that's good. Again, then it brings in that industrial dollars, uh, come in to play at twelve percent. Excellent. Uh, bit of a month to date, sales tax picture, kind of gives you an idea of what we, over the last three years, what we've done during certain months. Uh, note here is to notice, um, whatever month you see that sales tax listed in, that means it came in two months before. There's a two months lag, lag in sales tax reports. So typically you see like February is your peak month, but that reflects your December Christmas sales. You, you see that, uh, typically, you know, May is high, but it's typically reflects your Easter type sales. And, and likewise with August, you get some of those, you get Christmas shop, not Christmas, I'm sorry, going back to school shopping in those type of trends. This gives you a month to date. Look, next slide. Uh, general fund expenditures, uh, you know, we're approximately about a hundred and seventy million dollars there. You see police there forty eight million leading the way. Fire forty three million, three eighty two. This is not all the expenditures for these departments. We have sep- separate capital reserve funds that I'll show you later. The dollars are being expended for both of these departments. You see, we're projecting that forty five million for fire this year. We've talked about that and what we're doing to do that. In this budget, we are, we're also, while we haven't included the fire dollars for contract, we are counting for. We're aware of them. We, we know that we have to do that and take that on, and we're prepared to do that with this budget. Transfers out, that's basically capital reserve projects, major projects, equipment, this this money's pushed out of general fund into the capital reserve fund to make major purchases, et cetera. Excellent. Expenditures by department, this gives you that pie chart again, with police at twenty eight percent and fire twenty six. Public, public works at nine percent, parks and green space at four, uh, percent. Excellent. Changes, when we had the last workshop, council had some feedback on some things you'd like to see or see differently, see different. And staff identified some things we needed to change. So these are changes we've made since we've last met with you in this budget. Uh, the food park, food truck park designs, some kind of way it got left out, so we may put that back in. We, at that time, we had two real time crime center, center analysts, and now we've made it four, so two additional at those dollars. We included the H R incentive for the people that live in Beaumont, of course, for the police accreditation. And we took the contingency fund from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. A city the size of Beaumont should have more contingency than fifty thousand dollars. And so we felt more comfortable with putting that, moving that contingency up to one hundred thousand dollars. And the FUSIS match, we had in the previous budget at seventy five thousand. That's just the city took on the entire amount, but since then, B I S D has approved their participa- patient, which they pick up part of the cost and Lamar picks up part of the cost. Uh, and some posi- new positions that we've identified, they won't start until March one. Instead of October one, which I physically you start, so that, that saves us a three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. We added money for the downtown enforcement, additional dollars, money for dispatches, payments to management and FICA was charged to P D and error, so we fixed that. Some revenues we discovered during that time period, property tax came in higher than we had estimated. So we gained seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the higher property tax revenues coming in, what the assessed values that. And we also received a library grant of twenty four thousand one ninety five and the library, we got feedback from council that you, you didn't, you had, you had some issues with the library rental fee, room fee, so we dropped that and that made less, uh, revenue. So we achieved about a, a one million, one seventy two, four eight dollar savings since we last met with, with doing that workshop. Next, next slide. Looking at general fund staffing in our departments, uh, we, we looked at some departments and look at some things we think this city should have or needs to have. It's not wants but needs. Uh, animal care has been a big issue here over the last two years. So we've been trying to put them in a position to where they can, they can be successful in what they're doing. Uh, so we're looking at proposing putting a field supervisor. But then right now, they don't have a supervisor in the field to do things. The director's having to go out into the field to do things. And also a part time killing office assistant. Uh, they need some people to help in their office. City Attorney's Office, part time legal clerk too. And to note that this is not new money, uh, City Attorney's Office did a great job in taking a position that they had and, and repurposed it into this. So we, we thank them for doing that. Event services, two positions, and a vent maintenance worker and someone to coordinate the civic center. Give it some attention. I mentioned the grant coordinator already, finance bar two. We had some issues with getting, we, we're a busy city. We're getting R P's out, R F Q's out, uh, getting things purchased. So we're, we're getting them some help so we can process those things faster. Information technologies, inventory control coordinator. Believe it or not, this will be their first new person in thirteen years. It's hard to believe with the way I T grows and, and, and organizations. Uh, so they'll be getting some help with this. And libraries, library program coordinator. This person will work with all the libraries around town to coordinate programs within all of our libraries. This is, uh, you like adds tremendous value to a city when you can get somebody, someone to go out and coordinate those with use, even with elderly people, but it, it, it adds a lot of value. Public works, streets, uh, two. Uh, and when you say streets, we're not just talking about driving surfaces. We're talking about drainage, uh, and ditches and cleaning, et cetera. They'll do that. Lakeside facility, uh, assistant managers, someone to help there. And then I mentioned the program coordinator in recreation to to work with the community, uh, layout son and our youth programs. Uh, mentioned P D. They also get records, records technician, a planning company, community development housing assistant. Next slide. Okay, busy slide. Uh, fund balances, you know, we talked about fund balances and fund balances increasing. Uh, again, this year, the top one is general fund, which had the required fund balances, the city of Beaumont general fund. Fund balances are twenty percent of the operating general fund, and that would equal thirty-four million seventy-one thousand six twelve. Uh, but based upon this budget, uh, we're covering that, but we'll be nine million seventeen thousand dollars above that eighteen. You meant, if you saw the earlier slide, I said last year we were five million uh above required fund balance. With this budget, we'll be nine million above required fund balance, which puts us about twenty-five percent, will be over twenty-five percent. Uh, fund balance where you have a twenty percent requirement, but this will give you over twenty-five percent. So this more than covers that you have good dollars. It puts you in a good health position. It's going to put us in a good health position with the BUN rating agencies uh to make money cheaper for us to borrow, uh, et cetera. So you'll be there. And if you look at the water and sewer fund, that required fund balance is eight million nine. Uh, over policy is fifteen million fifty-seven three thirty-six. Now with this one, there there are some things that will be bought. You have some projects to be done too. So this will help pay for some of those projects, but you will have a fair healthy fund balance. Likewise, solid waste, uh, two million required, you have three million over. Um, long story short, your total fund balance requirement out of these, the funds, general fund, waterfront, solid waste fund, it's forty-five million. Uh, with this budget, we're proposing putting together that fund, we will have that fund at seventy million. So you'll be thirty-five percent above required fund balance with this proposed budget. Next slide. And again, there have been questions about what's a balanced budget, you know? So we looked at the fund, our financial policy, fiscal policy, because it's different in different cities. And this is the definition, where a total proposed expenditure shall not exceed total anticipated revenues and available reserves in the city manager's proposed budget. And now you've got to realize that you can't exceed required fund balance either, so that that requires the fund balance. And this is where I noted that twenty percent is our policy. We want to get to maybe next year, recommend to this council that you change from twenty percent to twenty-five percent to give you more money. Uh, as I change your adopted policy and likewise twenty percent uh and uh go with the solid waste and water. Excellent. Uh, some uh general fund fee adjustments, we talked a lot about fee adjustments. Uh, so we've come back with, again, we had, we'd workshop this and we came back with uh some recommendations. Uh, we did remove the contractor fee, fees requested by city council out of there, and then we took the library rates and lowered them. The truth is, if you look at like last adjusted, the city has not kept pace with what is costing you to provide these services. And you you're you're at the position where you're paying more than you're bringing in for these services. And if you say in twenty-ten was last adjusted building permits and and uh community development. Two thousand four, you know, you're looking at twenty years. We're not adjusting some of these in a long period of times. And what you're doing, you're having people, you're having taxpayers pay for something, it's some a service some other people are getting. So we we look at it and say it's it's a fee, but it's a fee because somebody's getting this service, and they need to be able to pay their costs for this service. Uh, and pay their first share and not be able to, where we have to take it out of taxpayer dollars. Next slide. Here we get into some of the, a couple of the individual requests, what we talked about, economic development, setting up that department. Uh, it's it's cost, what costs us three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, the grant coordinator will be fifty-four one seventy-eight. And the buyer and financing forty-five six oh three. Next slide. I'll try to speed it up. Uh, investment consultant, we we want to work with the, one of our investment teams to work on our investment, to maximize our dollars. Uh, we have here to sit at the city where we have them invested. Uh, so as proposed at fifty thousand, the field supervisor animal care is forty-five six seventy-eight. I T coordinator fifty-four three eighty-four, and the real-time crime center analyst with the four at P D is two hundred and seven thousand five oh eight. Next slide. Jefferson Theater dressing room floors, who uh we've been trying to get this done a couple of times since I've been here, I think. So I have fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the Lexapro policies, getting those policies and becoming credited with the fire department sixty-eight thousand eight seventy-four. And a pharmaceutical inventory control vending machine for fire department to dispense their drugs at thirty-five thousand five twenty. Citizen Fire Academy, mention that five thousand, A I Citizen Portal Chatbot thirty-one five, and the library pro- program coordinator forty-five six seventy-eight. Demolition costs, uh, we're looking at adding an additional three hundred forty thousand, if I mistake that one. Uh, Cheryl, let you let me know. We currently have approximately five hundred thousand in the city's budget for for such work. We're adding more dollars to that to support efforts that we're looking at doing in the downtown area, et cetera. So that will give us approximately eight hundred and forty thousand dollars to to do such work. Uh, radar feedback signs, we talked about traffic common policy, these signs will give us that information we need uh to put monitors and speeds in neighborhoods uh to where we can get speeds and time of day and 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 type of vehicles and whether the weather, whether it's raining, et cetera, for us to make decision on uh on on traffic comment. Uh, recreational fa- facility system managers thirty-six five sixty-eight, sixty-nine, I'm sorry, and program coordinator thirty-five four forty-two. Bank, uh, buildings need painting, that's particular parks, uh, Alice Keith, John Paul Davis and Rogers Park fifty-four nine. And then adjustment uh to minimum wage, market adjustment, cost of living, we're looking at last year, I mentioned the cup uh salary compensation. The second year of that compensation study costs for this two hundred ninety thousand four forty-six to make sure we get everyone up to those minimums that were identified by council of at least fifteen dollars an hour, et cetera. So that's uh just year two of their plan, and then it also includes a two percent cost of living increase for civilian staff at seven sixty-three eight twenty-three. Capital reserve fund, which is mostly infrastructure or or equipment type projects, that's a million five. Uh, Minister of Court, I don't have to read it all, but you can look at that. I guess I will light up underpass at Lamar and M L K that's in there, Jefferson Theater, Tuck Point one oh eight. And the rigging curtain system, what which was budgeted, is a carryover from this year's budget, eight hundred thousand dollars. Next slide. Uh, looking at equipment for the fire department, just assortment of equipment here that totals eight hundred twenty thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars for the fire department. This is in addition to their budget. These, these are in a separate category. Excellent. Uh, police, this, this is also in addition to their budget. These are things that are being funded, you know, the grant radio match for the port security grant. Um, Exxon Police Equipment and Cup video, so it all totals one million four fifty-nine four hundred dollars, million and a half dollars. Uh, capital major vehicle highlights, we had a lot of question about vehicles. Uh, this also includes eleven vehicles in the police department, which includes pickup, Tahos, motorcycles, uh, explorers. What was identified, the police department had a, had a half million dollars of vehicles. Fire department vehicles, about one million one six nine. Now note that the fifteen hundred gallons per minute, minute, gallons, gallons per minute, pumper is about one point oh five of that. But it's not, we can't receive it until three years. It's taken us a three-year delivery uh time on these uh fire vehicles now. But we have to put it in the budget now and plan for it and pay for it in twenty twenty-eight. And of course, EMS vehicles, another three hundred six thousand six fifty, that's three boxes. We will refit an existing uh vehicle and then one ambulance chassis. Next. Lately, we we had some more incidents in our parks, uh, vandalism, et cetera. So uh, staff has gotten together, identified these parks that are listed here and to outfit them with cameras that are costing one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we will get those, that that into this budget, and we will get those cameras installed for these parks. Uh, Babes Harris Lefler, Magnolia, Robbins, Brought, Charlton Pollard, Pearl Sting, it's a sting of Stein, Chris, Dishman Park. Water and wastewater rate structure, we've had discussion about this, you know, we had a a great study done, a lot of discussions. Uh, in our last workshop, um, Grady Reed and H D R came back with a uh recommendation of four percent for water and ten percent for wastewater. Uh, heard from some of y'all, so we're coming back with the proposed eight percent for wastewater rather than ten percent and try to smooth it out over next year to do that. This is uh, you know, our fund had been our rates versus cost of service. He told us that we were not charging enough for our cost of service. But also you have to remember that these dollars project out and and replaces the infrastructure that needs replacing over these time period. It's, it's, we have problems with our sewer system uh being infiltrated and and things that need replacing in our water system. So this is, this identifies a method of paying for the cost of replacement of all that infrastructure over the time period. Next slide. Uh, I think I covered most of this. You can kick next slide. And this just gives you an idea of what someone's water bill will look if you, uh, residential, if you use five thousand gallons per month. Uh, it would go up about four dollars and eight cent. Um, but basically, your water and wastewater increase will average out to about five point eight percent total. Next slide. It gives a look on how we compare to other cities, uh, Beaumont's in the mid-range. Uh, you know, we have Abilene Toll Groves and Needle in below us, White Cove pulled out the above, orange above us. But this slide, this uh shared that they have, this doesn't reflect their increases for this year. And I don't know, but I was told Groves has just gone up thirty-five percent on on their rate. So while we're we're in the mid-range, we're not the lowest, but we're certainly not the highest with our rate for water and wastewater. Next slide. And this is commercial, commercial water rates. And again, we're we're in the mid-range of these cities. Uh, I won't get into this one, it's kind of busy, you you have a copy of this. But this gives you an idea of the magnitude of what we work on with our sewer and water system and the and the challenges we face and what our people are doing with the, with our water and sewer lines. And uh, it's right now, if if we get a inch, inch and a half of rain, we have major problems because it's infiltrating into our system and fills it up and causes it back into people's home. So we we want to be able to get a, get that infrastructure replaced, get better, newer infrastructure in place uh to one, offer better customer service for our citizens, but also cut down on some of these calls. Excellent. Uh, I won't dare try to get into all these water and sewer projects. Go to the next one, I think it might total, oh, it's three of them, one more. Uh, things in the water and sewer fund, uh, two million one thirty-six of a new additional projects. Um, just, just for the water. Next slide. Solid waste, um, we talk with solid waste and we talk with Benji, and the city has to start planning for a new sale. Um, we're looking at at the landfill filling up, and we'll start having to save money to pay for a sale. And so that's why we're looking at a possibly increase that was recommended by the solid waste department of a dollar seventy-five a month and a tra- additional trash can from three seventy-five to five dollars to start getting money to pay for, to construction of that new cell. However, no landfill disposal fees will be adjusted in twenty twenty-five. Solid waste highlights, this is equipment they're getting trucks, big thing is a D nine, D eight, D nine dozer, five hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars. And rebuild the trash compact at five hundred twelve thousand five hundred. Next slide. C I P, we'll go through that quickly, next slide. Uh, I'm just gonna touch on twenty twenty-five, you can see each year, these projects are identified for those years. But this next year, we're having a another million dollar and closing out the riverfront project. These are for facilities, uh, forty-three thousand for the food truck park and a hundred twenty thousand two hundred for the colored ferry boat ramp. Drainage, uh, citywide ditching program, three million three, uh, some other additions. If you see a major projects that total ten million three fifty. Streets, uh, Fourth Street, we'll be wrapping it up. Uh, street, our normal street rehab rehab program, we've increased the dollars in there from eight million uh last year to thirteen million. We have a lot of miles of streets and it's easy, it's cheaper to maintain them than reconstruct them. So we want to make sure we keep up with that and be able to do that. Uh, Highland Avenue, I think I highlight that one, I think Councilmember Durio was interested in that. We'll start on that, two million in twenty twenty-five, on that construction, and then wrap it up with two million six in twenty twenty-six. And proposed traffic sick, proposed traffic sick, uh, major driver northwest Parkway. Next. Next slide. Water projects, total forty-six million four hundred forty dollars for twenty twenty-five. Has paid for it through an assortment of methods, G O bonds, uh, revenue bonds, grants and and operating fund. Next. Wastewater, just go to the toll because it's too many to try to read. Next one. Total twenty-seven nine twenty-five. Again, we want to get our water and wastewater systems in 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 good shape uh to where they're providing the 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 service that we need. Next. And as we wrap it up, bu- budget calendar, again, I mentioned August sixteenth, um, we filed that budget, the twentieth is today. Well, we're talking about it with the city manager, and you'll be looking at a proposed tax rate uh accepting the C I P and scheduled public hearings with council. We'll be coming back on September seventeenth for your consideration and adopting a budget. Uh, capital programs, accepting appraisers roles and ratifying uh budget and tax rate for sure. And the new fiscal year will start October one. Thank you. Next slide. And as I wrap up, I'd just like to thank the people who did the really, really hard work and and doing this work. Uh, our finance director, Miss Cheryl Ray, did yeoman's work in getting this done with her budget analyst Duncan Brown, who worked tremendously on it, and Amy Smith in the department, and Bridget Avic. Uh, they did great work, a lot of hours, a lot of time, and what they did to make us all look good. And of course, the two assistant city managers, June Ells and Chris Boone, working hard. But the directors and city staff, they they did the work in putting it together, you know? We we get the credit sometimes, they do the work for sure. And of course, this council for working their patience and working through this document, we appreciate you for doing this. Usually I do this from the stand, but because I can't run any marathons right now, I did it from my seat. So I thank the council, and thank you for your patience, and thank you for the work that you've done on this project.
Okay, we'll go with Chris, Mike, and eight councilmen, Durio, Getz, and Turner, and then Councilman. Okay, we'll go with Chris, Mike and eight Councilmen, Durio, Getz and Turner and then Councilman.
Yes, sir.
Few questions on the cameras in the park, do we have a a long range plan to put them in every park?
Yeah, we've identified all the parks, but those are the dollars we could identify right now to start with. And that's probably how many we can get done in a year. So that's why we started, but we we're looking at every park.
And how you come up with this number of three hundred and forty thousand for downtown demolition?
Well, we already had five hundred thousand and staff came back and asked for three hundred and forty more thousand. You know, we can only do so many, hopefully, hopefully proprietors would do them. But it will give us a good amount to to get started on buildings if we have to.
So what do we do with the money that's over our required balances?
That could be up to this council, but you know, it's good to to have some financial balances to to add to your financial fiscal standing. It's good when we talk to the bond agents, good when you want to issue debt. Now, you want to be careful not to carry it too high, people say, well, why are you keeping all the money? Why you you're charging me too much, but it it's good to have good fund balance, healthy fund balances.
The H R incentives, is that as far as living in Beaumont, is that for all the employees or just public safety employees?
Right now, it's for public safety.
And one or two other questions, what exactly is the Lexapro Fire and Police Accreditation? What is that?
Chief, the the two chiefs, people might have to explain that more, this is, it's coming, chief.
We, it's a way for us to standardize all our policies and procedures and help with the amount of grievances and lawsuits and assist legal. With any law grievances or lawsuits we might have. We have a tremendous amount of rules and regulations right now, and we've been kind of piecemeal in them for the last five or six years. So it's a way to get all our S O Ps, U O Gs and everything, rules and regulations standardized. So it it allows the firefighters and employees also, if they're not sure of the rule of the policy, to pull it up on their phone. And it's stored on the cloud, they can actually look at it and understand what the rule of the policy says.
And you received some type of accreditation for this?
Yes, absolutely. Now, that initial sixty eight thousand dollar cost is for this year with the twenty one thousand subscription cost going forward.
Okay, and that basically, is that the same thing for P D?
Somewhat similar, like you mentioned about the, it's policy focused, so it's just one piece of accreditation, but it's a major piece for us. It's a, it's actually several modules and it includes a training piece. It includes testing and includes looking at best practices. There's constant, especially for us, every legislature changes laws. There's case law that changes sometimes within each biennium. So there's a lot of things to where it's hard to keep up with things. There's other agencies that have ended up with best practices based on incidents that happen around the country. And and the International Association of Police or or the Texas Chiefs, Police Chiefs Association will come out with recommendations. So it's hard to keep up with those and manage them and make sure everybody understands them. And like chief says, be able to access them from any point. A lot of this stuff can also be publicized on our website so that very transparent what the policies are.
This this the first time we've done that?
Yes, sir. Okay, and along with the police training module, it includes a fire training module. That every month we send out the policies is reviewed and they're tested on it.
Thank you. And last question, I'm I'm, this next question, I'm through with you guys. Last question, tell me about this chatbot, chatbot citizens portal. Is this, you said it's something you have one less employee, is is somebody gonna lose their job because of this? Or is this somewhere you're not gonna have to hire?
No, A I doesn't replace people typically, you know, this is just, you know, it it you you get certain questions all the time. And you identify those things that you get and you come up with answers to them. And then when somebody calls and it has that question or whatever and it answers them. So people can be off on weekends or nights or different things like that, but it it's a great tool. I've seen it in other cities and and it's pretty awesome.
That's all I have, right now.
Mr. Williams, thank you for your presentation. As you recognize, the top priority of council was quality of life. And then as our new communications director recognized, the fastest growing sport in the country is pickleball. But what I didn't see in here was any pickleball courts being constructed or even planned for, maybe I missed it, but can you show me where that is?
Yeah, I think pickleball should be in there, I think the first part, the first year should be the just for the design and engineering of the courts. And then the actual construction for next year, so.
That's what I thought too, but I didn't see it as you went through this. Is it somewhere in here?
It's, let's look in our C I P. It's it's in the.
Think design, design for next year and then construction the year after.
Yeah, we start to design next year, money, we have money in it to start with this budget.
Okay, that's wonderful, because that's actually a sport that will bring people into our community. And for tournaments, they can stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants. They've already had some nice pickleball tournaments out at the athletic facility. And with increased courts, they can make those bigger. One thing I did want to also ask you about is that, yes, you're required to have a balanced budget. And sometimes the way you accomplish that balanced budget is you have to pull from reserves. In order to make sure that your revenue meets your proposed expenditures. That's what's happening this coming year, isn't it? There there is a deficit unless you pull from reserves.
Well, again, it's it's terminology, I wouldn't call it a deficit because the definition says. You, it's the dollars you bring in plus reserves, but you can't exceed, you can't go under your required fund balance. You know, some dollars you bring in that year, a year before you expend them. And that adds for it to, you know, we issued sixty million in debt, what, a month ago, a few weeks ago? But that money is not gonna be expended next year, so it won't be reflected in next year's budget. So there's certain time timing things too, that they can't, just can't show in that particular year's budget. So there are different variables that play into that, that's just one of them. But but again, the your fund balance is tremendously healthy. And that's according to the definition, that's a balanced budget.
Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
Appreciate you, bear with me, guys. So I've seen a decrease in the fire budget by roughly two million dollars. That deficit, is that a representation of the overtime reduction proposed?
Yes.
So I was paying attention to that, I seen a big drop in that budget, which is good, chief, that's a good look. The second thing that was a concern of mine is our fire and police are the biggest expenditures of the city of Beaumont, which comes out to be roughly sixty percent. Another concern is, and I'm glad we addressed it, I want to explain why we came up with the H R incentives for fire and police. Because sixty four percent of our police officers work in the city of Beaumont but live outside of the city of Beaumont. And understand, our city makes our revenue off property taxes and sales taxes, and you've seen the property taxes are roughly thirty one percent, correct? And then the fire department, seventy five percent of our fire department lives outside of the city of Beaumont, but works inside the city of Beaumont. And I just want to highlight, when you grow a city, you make your money off property tax and sales tax. And if you have that large of a percentage not living here, you don't capitalize on that property tax value. So this a hundred thousand dollar H R incentive is to incentivize our officers to actually live and in a community that they work in. And in response to that, incentivizing them to move here, we hope to gain that property value off them actually living in the community they work in. We thank for all our public or safety officials, but I think it's imperative that we do highlight that percentage of the officers that actually live and work here versus the ones that don't. And I think it's important that we do incentivize them, let them know we would love them living in the community they actually work in. So I do understand why we did that, I just wanted to give the community some background on why this all came about. The next thing I want to highlight is, while the city of Beaumont's population has not grown in the past decade. I want to compliment staff on the ability to increase our general fund, which is our fund balance, without a growing population. That's pretty impressive. And not only were y'all able to increase our fund balance, you were able to give citizens a raise, this council. I want to thank everybody, we were able to give our our employees a consistent raise almost every year without a growing population. That shows that you guys were very fiscally conservative and you did a real good job on capitalizing on how to save money. And give out money without a growth in population, I think that's huge. One thing I realized that we did last year, and I I pushed for this in June, I appreciate you, well, Mr. Ellis, Assistant City Manager. I appreciate you going out and exploring this, we did a beautification fee. And that actually gave the citizens opportunity to donate funding towards beautification efforts throughout the city of Beaumont, and it's been successful. But something we did look at, but this council didn't take action on, and I'd like us to consider looking at it again, is parking fees and street user fees. With our population again not growing, we got to figure out ways to bring in more revenue in the city of Beaumont. And Mr. Ellis, I mean, Assistant City Manager June Ellis, if you can bring, you know, maybe that back. Or we can kind of talk about it as a council or workshop it, I think that'd be very strategic. Because as you see this year's budget, we didn't have any park fees as we did on last year. And we need to look at all options when it comes to bringing in revenue to our city to increase the quality of life as this council's number one priority. So I think we need to look at parking fees and street user fees. Most communities across the United States and other cities, they're utilizing these. So I think as the city of Beaumont, we're not unique from other cities, we should be taking advantage of these same methods as most cities are. And I've been studying our tax abatement structure. And that's another thing I think we can capitalize as a city, we we give out these tax abatements, but what we're not, what we're not doing. I think what we can do better at is actually assessing these industrial companies on things like the word local. What do we call local? Are we actually evaluating and and looking into how many are we hiring local? What is local? Is local Beaumont? Is local southeast Texas? I think we need to be more specific. I know the county is supposed to be responsible for doing the audit, but I I spoke with the county and it's not a thorough audit. So I do think we should look at exploring it ourselves, because this is a lot of revenue we could be missing out on. I want to compliment the Parks and Greenspace Department, the highway maintenance budget was pretty high the last two years. And it was, it went from being over a million to under a million, I think that's great work. The Finance Department, a grant writer is something this council felt that the city desperately needed. And now we do have a grant writer, there's so much money and revenue out there that I I didn't feel like we were taking advantage of. Now we have that grant writer position, I'm looking forward to see the fruits of the labor. The recreational program coordinator, Mr. Williams, you might have to chime in on this one, because at the last meeting, we kind of, we kind of slightly discussed it. And we noticed some programs that our community liaison was putting together, can you kind of explain how this position will work with that position?
Well, they'll they'll be working with them assisting and and we we so new that we haven't had a chance to make this announcement. But we're looking at splitting out some of those programs you identified, flag football, youth basketball, track. And the pools with the community liaison and this person. And they'll be working those parts of the recreation. And then we'll split the other with golf, tennis, softball, disc golf, soccer, volleyball into another division. So we're we're looking at splitting them up into divisions and people.
Okay, when can we expect to get that update? About a.
This week.
This week? All right. The library coordinator position, we mentioned something that I seen in Washington, D C in a youth engagement conference. Khan Academy, and I've been working with council, I mean, not council member, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Boone, about Khan Academy. Which is basically a program that'll help with literacy and and education that we can put in our libraries in the city of Beaumont. Can you kind of update us on where we at with that program and if that's something that'd be beneficial for the city of Beaumont?
Yes, sir. So since you mentioned that, we did some research and Khan Academy is free, you've got to have some log, you know, login credential, but it is free. And so we, libraries did get with I T staff and they have basically put those links on all of our systems in the libraries. And also our communications department is working right now to do a a P R piece on that. Because we know schools are now back in session, so we feel like it'll be helpful, so that is, that is in the works.
Thank you, you know, I think that'd be a good opportunity to assess the support and partner would be S D and give our youth, you know, additional study time. And and my last thing was, we have the G O bonds coming up. And I think it's important that these are some of the big ticket projects, some of the big items that I think the city would be excited about. Mr. Williams, can you kind of explain to the community, how does these G O bonds work? And, you know, some of the big projects like a water park, like recreational centers, like airport hangars? Like, can you explain how these G O G O bonds work and the benefit of going through this process?
Okay, I would go to finance, but I'll take a shot at it. You know, some some projects are just large projects that can't be funded through regular revenues. Such as sales taxes and property taxes, and the city has to go out and issue debt for these. And then they have to back that debt with revenues from the city, you know, which typically mean taxes. And so you go out and you can either sometimes, you put it on the ballot or or to vote, to vote on these projects. Sometimes with some C O projects, council can issue or council can issue the debt themselves. So major things, you mentioned a water park or a major parks, any any really major project. It can go on the ballot and and citizens vote for it. I missed something, staff.
No, that was that was on point, I just, we got this coming up pretty soon, and I just want to take every opportunity to educate the community as often as I can. Because these are some big ticket items coming up, but overall, y'all did a great job with the budget. I really liked how you actually were able to increase the budget, increase staff salaries without a population growth, that's really impressive.
Thank you. Councilman Phil Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, city manager and your staff for the hard work in putting this budget together and the thoroughness in which you presented it. Have four questions, I'll go through them very quickly. Number one, we're talking about a zero base budgeting, as Councilman Getz mentioned, and I appreciate your hard work to get us to that. I understand that we're projecting a hundred sixty seven million revenue, a hundred and seventy million expenditures. We have an under three, three point one million. We have our fund balance, we can pull it out of, and I understand. That leaves us with an over nine million of what the policy requires, okay? So I guess my concern is, a zero base budget for me is dollars in, dollars out, equal, come to a zero. Taking money out of the fund balance to make up that difference for me is not a zero base budget. But I can understand we get into semantics and I don't want to do that. I guess my concern is, if we continue at a three million dollar a year deficit, let's say, over five years, six years, seven, eight, ten years. Then where does that put us? And so how would you and the staff speak to that? That if we continue on this at three million dollars a year, let's say, because Beaumont, where it's at right now, we don't know what the future looks like. Where would we be in ten years with our fund balance?
Well, it depends. You know, you zero base budget is basically when you start from zero and each department justify each dollars into the budget. It doesn't so much compare with whether it's a deficit or not. It's like, okay, you got ten widgets, you know, how much do ten widgets cost? That's one cost, then how much do twelve widgets cost? And total it up to the total budget, starting from zero. And total it up to the total budget, starting from zero. Before, uh, here, people got the same amount that they got the year before, no matter what. You got those dollars. If it was 100 million, you got 100 million. Then you add from there. With the zero base, you got zero and you had to prove everything, all, all of your expenditures. You know? According, again, according to the, to the definition of this budget, it's not a deficit budget. It's not a deficit budget. You're actually growing your fund balance tremendously. You know, you have a 35% above required fund balance dollars to use on projects and, and that, and according to your budget definition, you can use them. But, you know, we won't be running a deficit budget. If it were a deficit budget, we'd be saying a whole different story. I don't view this as a deficit budget because you have expenditures, again, that come in one year versus another year. And it doesn't always equal up. You know, you, you, you might, if we're gonna do a whatever, new road and we issued that debt for that $10 million for that road, but we can't get to build it till the next year. It goes in the next year, but the revenue shows in the previous year. So it won't always add up dollar for dollar.
So it's like an accrual system in financing? I think that's the word.
It, it could, yes, that's a good analogy.
And, and so I, I understand how complicated that can get. Just know that I look forward to the day when we have, uh, the amount of money we spend is the amount of money that we take in. So, and I know we all want that so that we don't have to reach into the balance and pull cash out to try to, uh, make those numbers match. But, uh, that, that, I know you've been working hard on the budget and I just appreciate that. And I just wanted to draw attention to that, that of course, that 3.1 million dollar loss is going to be a concern of mine because as I said, of years to come, uh, where does that, where does that leave us? Uh, number two? Yes, go ahead.
Now, also part of that is 12 million being transferred out of general fund to the capital reserve to pay for projects. So you're looking at 12 million of that, those dollars that's transferred out to buy different equipment or pay for road repairs and things like that. So, so you actually got more, but the cost of the way it's accounted for, it seems like a deficit when you actually had a positive, but you just paid, you moved some money from one, uh, fund to the other.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Uh, number two, you mentioned our, our debt at 18.5 million and the ratio is a little too high. Um, I did a rough calculation and it's around 11%. Uh, so my question is my personal information is where, do we know where we'd like that ratio to be? What's, what's a target for us to shoot for?
I don't remember the number in, in that bond rating group, but they just made that comment to us that they thought our debt ratio was a little high. Do you remember, sure?
Okay. Uh, number three, uh, you'd mentioned that we can lower the tax rate between now and the 17th when we approve the budget, but we can't raise it.
Correct.
Between now and the 17th, can we make changes to the budget?
Yes.
So we could add money to it?
Yes.
So, uh, just a question, uh, is there an argument for us to raise that tax rate today to give us some room for these adjustments that may be coming? And then on the 17th, we can lower it back down if we so choose or need to?
As, as a city manager, I will never recommend you go higher than a voter-approved tax rate.
Well, I, I, well, I, yes, that's, but we can go up 3.5% if I'm correct. No revenue, I know is that, no new revenue, we have it. But voter approval rate, I think we can raise it 3.5% without a vote, correct?
No, we're at the voter-approved rate.
We are there now.
So if you go any higher, you'll be above the voter-approved rate would, would make it susceptible, excuse me, to a petition to do a, a rollback.
Okay, so then anything we add to it, we're just going to add to that 3.1, 3.1 million dollar under between now and the 17th?
I spin it again.
If we can, any, any, any changes we make to the budget between now and the 17th? If we add, if we tell you we want more, spend more money, all we're going to do is, is add to that 3.1 million dollar loss that we're showing right now.
Well, it depends on which fund you're spending it on. If it's out of water fund or, uh, solid waste fund, those dollars don't account for that.
Okay.
But if it's out of general fund, it could, according to what you're saying.
Okay. Last question. Yeah, we mentioned about an assistant, I believe, Lakeside Center. I believe it was the Lakeside Center and, and, and dealing with recreational things. Is that correct? Again, you and I talked about this. I, I know we can't make this happen, but I hope that we could pay attention and hopefully look for somebody who's bilingual and have someone who can speak to our Latino community, uh, so that they can, they have someone there that they can, uh, communicate with. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Councilman Samuel, before.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Manager and all the staff. Um, the presentation and the budget appears to be a lot easier to follow. Uh, but I look forward to continuing to look at the budget, but thank you.
Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, a couple of quick questions. On page 15 and 17 of the budget, under the actuals for 2023, where you have property taxes under revenues and it says 6.2 million dollars. Is that a typo?
Which, which is that? Can you get the screen back? What's 15? Which one is that, Councilman?
On page 15 of the, of the budget, not of your package.
Okay, okay, in the budget book?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it is, uh?
Yeah, we still have a couple of issues to work out with our new budget software. So that's what that is. That'll be corrected.
All right, thank you. Uh, my next question, on all these other recovery funds, you got COVID recovery, Ora recovery and Harvey recovery. Is all that money going to be collected?
So probably not. Harvey, I think we're going to be in really good shape. Uh, Laura, it looks like we may be a little bit under, but I'm not going to know till next year. And COVID, we just don't know at this point in time. I am going to allocate some more money to the COVID fund, uh, to cover some of that next year because we have some ARPA funds left and I'm going to take those to that COVID fund to try to shore that up and make sure that we're in good shape there.
So are we budgeting as if we are getting that money?
Yes, and I think that we are going to get a lot of that money. Um, but we don't know, I don't know if anybody's been paid for COVID yet from FEMA.
Okay.
We have, we have turned everything in that we have.
And I have a bunch more revenue questions. I'll just email you all of them.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Councilman Turner?
Just, and all I request is in our budget book, how you had the percentages in the pie chart? You had the pie chart, but we don't have the percentages. So I just request that the percentage breakdown would be on every pie chart.
I don't know that, I don't think it's, our software is able to do that. We have it taken in to try to get that to happen.
Oh, man. Okay.
I can do it on Excel for you.
I can do it. That's why I was asking for it.
We can, we can get that for you.
I would just love to have a budget. If we have to do it on another document.
I definitely want to see it.
Councilman Getz?
Uh, it was explained to me that my concern about the pickleball courts is because we were missing a slide in our presentation, but that will be supplemented after the meeting today. It concerns all of the parks projects. That will be, is there anything else that was missing that you're aware of that is going to be supplemented later?
Have a copy of the parks?
No, I think that was the only thing missing and we've already, we've already emailed it to Catherine and virtue to get to you.
Thank you.
Councilman Felschall?
I would just like to have a budget book. I don't have one.
You don't have one? There you go.
Neil took mine. Thank you.
And, and remember, this is still a work in progress for the next approximate month almost, so we'll be refining things.
My comments are, uh, we've had lots of excellent presentation and lots of good questions and I thank you for that. I, remember it's a budget, uh, as with this year's budget, often we don't spend everything that's in the budget. As the last two years, I know that we have not. So, uh, that is one item and, you know, we do our best to budget it. And when we talk about, as Councilman Felschall pointed out, again, why economic development and downtown development is so important for our city, for us to be able to grow additional revenue without increasing taxes is to increase property taxes and increase our sales tax. And by getting more foot traffic in here, by getting more visitors here and making our community more attractive, where cities that are growing are experiencing that, uh, that significant growth in Texas alone, we can, uh, certainly meet and exceed our budget and, uh, spend money in areas that right now are extremely tight for, you know, parks and youth initiatives and other things that we would like to see, including water parks. But as we get that additional economic development and hopefully with the, uh, downtown hotel and other projects that we're looking at, we, that will be generating additional revenue. So this is based on our current revenue. So, yes, sir.
Public safety was identified as one of our priorities and one of the things that I don't think would add significantly to the budget. In fact, it may not even have to be pushed in there. But the stretch of feeling between Dallin and Major really needs to be considered to be restriped and put on a road diet so that it's not two lanes in both directions, but one lane with a pedestrian walking lane. We don't have money budgeted for a sidewalk on feeling right now, but it would certainly help the kids that, uh, walk from Westbrook to, uh, the apartments and the townhouses if they had at least a dedicated lane that they could walk next to the curb and not have to, because when you have two lanes of traffic in both directions, there is no room for a bicyclist or a pedestrian to even attempt to try to walk on that street in that stretch. What happens is that the cars that are coming and if they see a bicyclist or a pedestrian, they're going to have to wait and stop and move over to the other lane. You just, you just can't, it's too close. So that needs to be done. Does that need to be budgeted or is that something we can do in-house without actually doing that?
We're, we're currently working on a traffic study on that. So until we finish that, we won't know what recommendations we have to address anything that we find in that study. So it'll have to wait until we finish the traffic study.
Well, including that traffic study, another drunk driver went through the wall of a dance academy over there on feeling.
We're aware of that. The report's not, uh, ready yet, but we are aware of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager. And now, uh, Mr. City Manager, if we have, may have the reading of item number one.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, consider resolution receiving the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget and scheduling a public hearing. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we please have the reading of item number two?
Council, consider a resolution of receiving the proposed 2025 capital program and scheduling a public hearing. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we please have the reading of item number three?
Council, consider establishing and taking a record vote on the proposed 2024, is that four, five? Four tax rate and schedule a public hearing. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of a point 659663. That's the recommendation, but council can do as it please.
Is there a motion for approval of item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? Uh, I believe we need a record vote.
Yes, sir. Mayor West?
Uh, approve.
Mayor Protimel?
Approve.
Councilmember Durio?
Approve.
Councilmember Getz?
Approve.
Councilmember Turner?
Approve.
Councilmember Felschall?
Approve.
And Councilmember Samuel. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with Texas Drainage, Inc. for the citywide ditching program faced to a project and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for, for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio?
Yes, is, is this part of, or does this have anything to do with that, uh, private neighborhood over there off of West Calder? That's wanting us to take over their, uh, infrastructure?
No, sir. Uh, this has to do with a section of West Calder Road between Felix Street and DD6 ditch 202B. Uh, there were some, uh, complaints by citizens of repetitive flooding, especially during large, very large events like Harvey and Amelda. We did a study with lead engineering and they gave us two options on addressing, uh, some of the drainage in this area. So option, uh, one was to, to do a lot less, just regrade the ditch, reset two culverts. Uh, but we decided to go with option two, which is to, um, do the recommendations in one as well as upsizing six culverts, one from, uh, to 24 inches, one from 18 to 24, three from 18 to 30 and one from 24 to 30 as we go down the ditch towards DD6 in order to increase the drainage capacity and reduce, uh, the risk of ineffective flow down that street. So it won't necessarily fix all the problems in this area, but will, it will improve the drainage down that section of West Calder to that DD6 ditch. And we felt like it was a good opportunity to add it and get it done at this time with the ditching contract.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public Works Director.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we please have the reading of item number five?
Council, consider an artness to amend chapter 12, section 12 dot 12 dot 001 and 12 dot 12 dot 002, 12 dot 12 dot 003 and 12 dot 12 dot 004. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, there is a motion. Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Uh, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Councilman Turner?
Assistant City Manager Boone, the Dream, the Dream Center, Salvation Army, Family Services, are these places currently at capacity? And will these options be open if we do approve this today still?
So we have and will continue to be in constant communication with Family Services, uh, as well as the Salvation Army. The reports we've continued to get are they're not at capacity. Um, I don't think we have a representative, representative from Salvation Army. I do think we have Chris Robinson is here with some other place in Henry's Place. Uh, as regarding the Dream Center, again, that's just outside the city. Uh, but we have visited it. We were very impressed by it. Um, we, we're, we hope to stay in communication, be able to refer folks, uh, down there as well. But to answer your question, so far, uh, not at capacity.[1738.96]
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that in this vote that those places aren't at capacity. And we still do have additional options. So I just want to thank Mr. Chris and Mr. Wesley for the work you do in the community. You guys are definitely appreciated. Okay.
Any, yes, Councilman Getz, Councilman Durio?
There was some comments made about the air conditioning at Henry's Place. Do we know if that's been repaired or is slated to be repaired? Please. Please come forward.
Good evening. So the reports on the news were incorrect. Henry's Place's air conditioner wasn't broken. The AC person that one day had asked if we could clear it out that afternoon to recalibrate because when you get a lot of people in there, the AC gets hotter. So we cleared it out for that one afternoon, but we were open all day. We were open the next morning and it's it's good. So it was never broken or we never closed down for that. So we're good. It's open.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Durio?
Assistant City Manager Boone, have we got in touch with the state to see if we were able would be able to receive direct funding, as you say, like Amarillo, Waco, College Station, instead of being in the balance of state system where we have to share funding for the homeless? We had to split it apart with a lot of people in it?
Yes, sir. We have communicated both with the state as well as the Texas Homeless Network, which is the recipient of those dollars. And again, we are trying to trying to figure out a way where we can get the direct dollars. But so far, we have not been successful, obviously. We will keep trying. Part of, I think, hopefully, our initiative at the legislative level, as we go to go to Austin, maybe in the spring, will be to have those conversations to maybe see if we can get some help from the legislature to get that distribution changed. Because again, we have cities with smaller populations that are getting the direct funding that we need.
Okay. I did speak with with our state rep manual, and they are looking into it also to see if it's something they might be able to do, where we'd be able to get direct funding, like some cities that were bigger than that that received that funding.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Philshaw?
I'm sorry, Councilman.
I yield to you, my brother.
All right. I appreciate you, young man. So Assistant City Manager Boone, we had funding allocated to address this. Will we be able to reallocate that funding and support additional homeless initiatives?
So we went back and we looked. And over the past 10 years, we've allocated $3 million towards homeless, our nonprofit partners that do this work, like Mr. Robinson's. They do this much better than I think we could. We're just not really set up for this. So again, going back, we have and continue and will continue to look for funding to help these nonprofits as a solution. To that point, though, as we got more funding, for example, ARPA funding during COVID, we allocated some of that funding, well, quite over a million dollars in tenant-based rental assistance. So in other words, helping folks pay their rent, pay their utility payments, so that they would not become homeless. We're helping them get into a housing situation. We allocated some unused CDBG funding. And as I say all this, I should point out, this is federal state funding. It's not general fund, local fund. So we allocated, we were able to find some unused funding, CDBG federal funding to help Salvation Army bring those beds online that are there on McFadden. So to your point, we have and we continue and we will try to allocate as much funding as we can, because we know this is an ongoing issue that all cities, most cities are struggling with, and it's an expensive issue. So we've talked about Houston in the past. They've had some success, less success in the last couple of years, in terms of what they've been able to do. But a lot of that success has to do with basically providing housing, and that that is expensive. So we will continue to look for look for funding that we can. And again, work with our nonprofit partners, work with Beaumont Housing Authority, work with the VA, just trying to come up with a solution.
Councilman Philshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. To speak to the question asked earlier by Councilman Turner, Mike Connor with the Dream Center was here, but it looks like he had to step out. I did speak to him early in the day. And the Dream Center is available for the homeless, the homeless population that has an addiction and that would like to move into their program, which is a nine-month program, and help the homeless with their addiction. But he's not in a place where he can just shelter, because the county will not allow him to do that. And so that may be something we as a city can clarify with him. But he did tell me that today, that he cannot shelter, but he is welcoming the homeless that has an addiction problem. And as I've said before, to the council and to the citizens, I know this is a very convoluted issue, and it's a very sensitive topic. I think it has to be approached with compassion. It's said that a society's character is judged and measured by how it treat it treats its weakest population. And so we have to look at the homeless, the unfortunate, and do everything we can to help them. I believe there needs to be a partnership between the city and our nonprofits. I believe there has to be. I think the city has to try to get out of the way as much as it can and direct funding to it or to the nonprofits, as we've just said. I believe all of that. I don't know that the city is equipped to really take this issue up on its own shoulders. I think it should be carried primarily by our churches and our nonprofits. So in my case, I know it's no secret, I pastor a local church, I've already met with my staff and said, we're going to up our game on trying to help the homeless population, because I think that's where the burden should fall. The city should partner and do what it what it can. But I don't think this is a situation that the government is set up to take on by itself. I just I don't see that. Cities across the nation are struggling with this. And as it's been said, Houston is having problems. So I hope we can move forward. And in the future, we can partner with the nonprofits as best we can to address this very convoluted situation. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Councilman Duria?
City Attorney Shereen Reed, what exactly we approve this today, what exactly is gonna happen here at Beaumont?
Well, ACM Boone has a great rollout plan. So I will defer to him.
Thank you.
We have had a essentially a team discussion in terms of city departments as to how we're going to roll this out in the in the most, the best way we think we can do it. And so we're going to do it in a very slow and deliberate way. And so the to be a little bit more specific, what our plan is, is September 2, we will convene, and we are going to probably prioritize the camps that are set up within neighborhoods. And the key is going to be communication with those folks, with the property owners, in terms of what their options are. Part of that discussion and outreach is going to be meeting with those folks to provide, this is a guide of resources. Y'all should have a copy at your at your chair. This is a guide that's put out. This is the 2024 Pocket Pal edition of resources for the homeless, put together by the Southeast Texas Coalition for the homeless. So you'll see, these are local resources that they can tap into. And if you look on the backside, there's a map of where where these resources are located. So again, the key is going to be communication, getting this information out. And again, starting at the beginning of the new month. We will, the idea is September 16, basically give time for the word to get out before we actually go back out and start, again, continuing to communicate. We will post signs at those locations, letting folks know about, you know, when this is going to take place, if they need to talk to somebody about it, how that's who they can contact about, you know, what's happening, collecting their things, et cetera. And then, again, because this is a new process for us, we will probably regroup as a kind of a tactical team in terms of how the initial process worked or didn't work, and what we need to change. But throughout this, we will be, as I mentioned, communicating with the owner of the property. So hopefully they'll be receptive and be part of the part of the solution to try to try to address this.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Getz?
I saw a story that St. Anne's Church has a door with a doorbell that you can ring during the day, that you can go and get a sandwich and a drink. And it's not on this map. Maybe we can get that included in our upcoming Pocket Pal.
Yes, sir. And along those lines, Councilman, this is an evolving document that, you know, we hope to supplement. The other thing is, we're going to encourage folks, whether it's individual nonprofits, churches, houses of worship, who do have programs like that, that we want to encourage those folks, even on an individual basis, to reach out to the city through the mayor's homeless coalition. Because what we want to do, part of that reason for that coalition, again, is to communicate, communicate with the providers within the community, as well as the individuals who need the services. So again, part of our discussion is going to be to encourage those, whether it's an individual or a house of worship, et cetera. Please let us know what resources you have so that we can augment and add to this guide, but also try to, you know, try to get word out through every channel we have.
As you know, I chaired that coalition for four years. And what we were able to identify is tremendous duplication of these types of services with the various groups that are going out to feed, which really actually resulted in a lot of waste. You know, one group would come by and feed the homeless at their camps, and 30 to 45 minutes later, another group would come by and do the same thing. A lot of that food ended up on the ground. I saw it with my own eyes. So if we can figure out ways to increase our efficiency, so that we can get this food and water and beverage to those that need it without the waste, it would be a service, a true service for the homeless.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Philshaw, you had?
Yeah, just real quick. And I agree with Councilman Getz. He and I have talked about this before several times about toxic charity is what it's called. And I left off one thing a while ago that I really wanted to say, and that is, I would encourage all the churches, the nonprofits to get together and to do their part. If everybody does something, if we can come together and support these people that are already, I mean, get behind these housing and shelters, and if we can just, if everybody would do something, I think we could address this issue in our city. But it takes everybody doing their part. And but doing it in a way that it's coordinated, as Councilman Getz is saying, working together. And the last thing, to the citizens that get frustrated, and I understand your frustration, for us just to go into a park or place that's right by a business and just gather up all the tents and stuff, and just remove all that stuff and throw it away, just please remember that that these are individuals that have constitutional rights, and that's private property. And we just can't go on there, go in there, gather it up, throw it in the dumpster. This is their property, and we have to respect that. So it's not an easy thing to resolve. It's, as I said, it's a complicated issue. But as we, as a city partner with the nonprofits, I'm hoping we can, we can make some progress. Thank you, Mayor.
And I want to thank you, Assistant City Manager Boone, and all the departments that have worked on this. It is a very difficult issue. It's no perfect solution. Hadn't been discovered yet here in this country, and we will continue to work towards it. And hopefully our churches will continue to show up and will meet the needs as as they're identified through the 501(c)(3)'s and churches that are providing those services. If there's no other questions, all those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we please have the reading of item number six?
Yes. Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number four to the contract with Callan Marine Limited for the Riverfront Park Restoration Project.
Is there a motion for item number six? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any questions? Councilman Turner?
Yes, Mr. Manager, or Assistant Manager Boone, about how much left is on this project? I know the deadline would be extended a little bit with the changes.
I'm going to defer to the Public Works Director on that.
Yes, sir. The current projected end date is by end of November at this point.
Okay, so it'd extend about 30 more days. And my second question is something Councilman Durio brought to my attention, because he knew I was going to ask this is a change order. But I noticed it has a contingency. The money that's not spent in that extra contingency, how does that work?
So we received FEMA funding for this project. We've also got, but that's the lion's share. We also have around $5 million that was related to that BP oil spill that that's in the pot on this as well. But because we did not restore the riverfront bank to the pre-Harvey shoreline, we restored it to the post Harvey shoreline. We negotiated with FEMA, and they allowed us to have a secondary project, which is the Colliers Ferry Pump Station. So all funding not used at Riverfront Park flows to the Colliers Ferry Pump Station. It appears we're going to be under the overall budget when we finish the pump station. And we are working with the EOC, and they're working with FEMA, and we're requesting to use the leftover funds, so to speak, from both Riverfront and Colliers Ferry to do a portion of that raw water line that takes the Colliers Ferry water it's pumping to the Pine Street plant, and therefore reduce the amount the city's going to have to pay for that raw water line.
I appreciate you, boy. I just had some wishful thinking since the food truck park was a part of.
That wouldn't be allowed for this funding. It has to be mitigation related. But every bit helps because it does help the water fund overall by.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Yeah, you go ahead. Councilman Getz?
Councilman Turner asked my question.
You wanted for pickleball.
All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven, please?
As counsel consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract the Vortex Companies for the Belvedere Drive and Clintonstone Street storm sewer unfold emergency repair project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we please have the reading of item number eight?
Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing cleaning and disinfection of four elevated storage tanks by Utility Services Company, Inc. of Perry, Georgia, with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion? Councilman Duria?
Yeah, I just one question for the Public Works Director. So we have six tanks, and this is for four. Have the other two already been done, completed?
We've actually cleaned and inspected all of the tanks throughout the city, and this is our second round. So this is readdressing the first four that had been done. The prison was done in September 2022. West was done in March of '22. Northwest was April of '21, and Dishman was March of '22. So what this is going to allow us to do now, since this is our second round, two to three years from the first, is assess how dirty they got over a two to three-year period and try to dial in whether we need to do this every two years or every three years for these tanks.
Okay, does this include painting them also?
No, sir. This full rehabilitation would include painting. The next one of those is going to be the South Tank. We did the Southwest over by Fire 10 this year. We did also the prison ground storage tank. So this is just to drain the tank, clean and sanitize the inside of it, fully inspect the inside of the tank, which you really can't do with the water in it, and just check how things are.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Turner?
Was this, did this come as a result of the Corona study we did a few years ago?
It was one of the recommendations that they made in there. This was actually something we had initiated even before they produced the study. But it was a recommendation from them that we continue this. It is a best practice for water system.
And lastly, just can you explain the benefit of cleaning these storage tanks?
Well, we have iron and manganese in our water system, and that builds up over time. So by going in and cleaning, that helps with discolored water and keeping the water, you know, from having those discolored events. It also really helps with inspecting the condition of those tanks. When we, say, for example, the West Tank over there off of Liberty, when we rehabilitated that tank, drained it, we found that we had some rafters that had rusted inside the tank by, and we don't rehabilitate, but every, say, 10 years, maybe 15 years. So what this allows us to do is check the condition fully inside those tanks and and address anything that's going on.
Thank you, boy. Because I mean, you know, before that study, we dealt with a lot Thank you, boy. Because I mean, you know, before that study, we dealt with a lot of, you know, discolored water and just seeing some of the results of that study, we actually implemented and we got a big reduction in those calls. It just shows the benefit of it. So thank you.
You're welcome. There's no other questions. All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the public hearing, please?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments related to the property located at 328 through 338 Bowie Street and 486 through 498 Pearl Street.
All right, at this point, the public hearing is open.
Oh, Brent Coon?
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. I'm not here for Tom. Could be, but his issues are front and center. I know a lot of you guys, the issues associated to the Gilbert Building are obviously concerned to everybody in the room, but I wanted to weigh in briefly on a couple of things historically. One is that I've worked downtown for 40 years. My old law firm, we bought the Stedman Building through the partnership. Tom Flanagan was involved in that and rehabilitated a great old building and a senior partner, Walter Humphrey, for 20 years. You know, the building was very vitalized, as are a number of the other old buildings. When I left that firm, I bought the Cowell Building, which many of you know is another 40,000 square foot building across from the courthouse. And by history there, just to let you know more about the dynamics, I spent several million dollars with Mr. Neal's dad rehabbing that building. And after I did that, I was unable to rent it. And I kept my office there, but most of the rest of the office space stayed vacant at a beautifully 100-year-old rehab building. The reason for it wasn't because of vandalism. It wasn't because of our other empty buildings in town. It was because there's no demand for building space downtown. Even today, 20 years later, half my building is still empty. It's been frustrating for Mr. Pruitt and Mr. Monklin and others that rent downtown to be able to rent any of that space because there's no demand for it. That's a beautiful building, easy access, free parking, lots of it, right across from the courthouse and such. There's just no demand. So that's my perspective at one level. So when you see somebody like Mr. Flanagan, who I've known for 30 or 40 years, who's reinvested most of his personal wealth in Beaumont, even though he was a poor author, you start asking questions. Why would you do it in the first place? It's not a vital town to invest in. I have a building in downtown Houston. That's another 1800 building. It's quadrupled in value the last 15 years. None of the buildings in downtown Beaumont are appreciating in value because there's no demand. Most of these buildings are empty in the first place because the people that were there moved elsewhere. The businesses that were here moved elsewhere, not because of vandalism, not because of crime, not because of empty buildings sitting around them, but because there's not a lot of interest in operating downtown Beaumont. And this perspective of the business community. So my concerns are for people that are in government that work here, that are in and out of downtown every day. Their jobs are here every day. The perspective of the people they talk to are other people that are in government that work here every day, or the other people that are stuck downtown. They don't understand the realities of business. I built Tuscany Park. I've owned a number of other business developments elsewhere. As you guys know, I'm primarily a trial lawyer that buzzes around the country. I see lots of other cities that have developed. I've had 16 offices around the country in areas that had many of the same problems endemic to Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Coon.
It's a problem everywhere, but they've had ways of circumventing it and growing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean Tucker?
Afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Happy to be here. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. Appreciate this opportunity to speak to all you, helping to preserve and restore the Gilbert Building. You've been saying it's an imminent threat. I don't see that at all. This last storm, I don't think it moved one inch and there was very little damage of any except for some water in that building. So there's a lot of needless fear about, about that building and it's not an imminent threat. I'm looking at my notes here. Oh, and the storm left thousands of people without electricity and did damage to a lot of homes, but I don't see any damage to that building. I don't think it even moved one inch, which is kind of what I expected. But I deeply appreciate your desire to protect the health and the well-being of those that live in this area. That's really, really important. And I do not at all see, like I said, a building as an imminent threat to the community. There are many other ways to make Beaumont safer, which would be far less costly and far more productive. If Mr. Flanagan, who owns the building, wants to restore it, then he should have that right to do it. My vision for this building is that, that he has the opportunity and he's starting with a clean slate. He can make this building amazing inside and have it best Wi-Fi, high-speed internet, everything in it with new wiring and everything, with all the new state-of-the-art inventions. This could be an amazing building for downtown Beaumont that many people would want to be a part of. I see it as a tragedy to needlessly destroy part of Beaumont's history. I don't really believe we need people in Beaumont City Council that have little vision or respect or courage to preserve our history. It is an important part of Beaumont. I do believe that this, if this were put to a vote in this area, I think most people would want to keep it. That's what I feel. The building has been fenced off and protected from intruders. I think the roads should be open for local businesses to support the businesses. And I do see, I do see a bright future for Beaumont. Takes vision and courage.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
And that's what we need. So, thank you.
Megan Cobb?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Megan Cobb. I've come here to talk about business, specifically retail business on Pearl Street here in beautiful, historic downtown Beaumont. I've lived in Beaumont for a combined 22 years and it has been such a joy and an inspiration to see the city grow and start to offer so much more over the years. As a mural artist who got my start a few hundred feet from us on a 7,000-square-foot freehand mural in 2022, and as a business owner of a boutique two blocks from us, I speak from vested interest and experience. I speak partially as a board member of the downtown Beaumont Cultural Arts District, but mainly my reason for coming here today is personal. My store is at 489 Pearl Street and it is named Toluca Trades. That name is a combination of my three kids' names, Tucker, Luke, and Ava. They are the reasons I work hard. Toluca Trades opened in March of this year and started growing more quickly than we could have anticipated. A pretty cool problem to have, so I addressed the problem and hired and worked and stocked the store accordingly. One month later, my husband passed away, which was a heartbreaking personal blow to our family. Two months later, the Gilbert Building burned and the block of Toluca Trades has been barricaded ever since. This was a heartbreaking professional blow. It was and is an event which has brought my business and my family to the brink of losing literally everything I've worked for. I've scrambled to keep from losing my home, my truck, obviously my lifelong dream, my store. And now I'm not even able to work at my store because between an ongoing average of three to four mural and painting jobs, which I often work on at night and if I can find childcare, I have taken on managing front of house at a busy local restaurant to avoid losing everything. I have a wonderful employee who works at my store during business hours, but it's been stressful and defeating to not be a part of my own dream, which is beginning to show signs of washing up due to absolutely no fault of my own or lack of effort. I have received no and ask for no recompense for the fire or lack of action regarding this building or the road closures. To be sure, it has had a huge and devastating effect on my profits, which have been dwindling more and more as the barricades remain on the exact block of Pearl my and three other small businesses share. I ask for consideration of an approach to get something done to help these businesses, two of which are well-established and two of which are new. We love you, Beaumont. You need us, local businesses, and we need you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, at this point, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. City Manager, we have the reading of item number nine.
Council consider in ordinance to declare 328 through 338 Bowie and 486 through 498 Pearl Street, also known as the Gilbert Building, as imminent danger and order the owner to arrest said structure within five days. Staff is requesting City Council authorization to demolish said structure without further notification to the property owner or City Council action. It comes to the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Do the council allow us? I don't want a motion to approve depending on how the question goes.
Okay.
He's asking to suspend the rule and the mayor's allowed it.
Thank you, Mayor. So 60 days ago, when we requested this item to be brought back to us, and the request was a couple of different things. One, a fence goes up, and two, an engineering study be provided to council and to the city. Has a engineering study been provided?
So we received the first engineering study, which was a field survey report that was basically to assess what the damages were. That was received on July 26. It's in y'all's packet. We did receive, so internal processes to get this item onto the agenda had to submit by August 12. Within his work program, he had until August 17 to give a full engineering report. He did submit that August 16. I believe that he printed out some copies for y'all. If he didn't, then I had staff print out those copies. And by he, I mean the property owner. But if, we can go ahead and pass along the engineer report that we received. It basically outlined, and I'll let his, him and his structural engineer kind of report on what that is, but from what I could see, it was a plan to shore the walls and for that to be completed by January 9, 2025.
Mayor, this is I'm going to ask that we reopen the public hearing just for the purpose, if y'all have questions for the property owner so that we're not, not out of order, if that's okay.
Okay. I'll reopen the public hearing so that we can receive this report and have it presented.
Thank you.
And could the property owner come to the podium and address the council?
City Manager Boone?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could just add a little bit to what Ms. Ingham was stating. Again, Friday, pretty late in the day, Friday, we received what y'all are being, what y'all are receiving now.
Would you like me to start, Mr. Mayor, or wait for the distribution?
You may begin.
Okay. Well, good afternoon and thank you for allowing me to be here and on this important topic. I am Tom Flanagan and I am the president of Beaumont Gilbert LLC, who is the owner of the building. I'm speaking on their behalf. So I'm proposing we do something positive here rather than fight. There's too much fighting in this city and that's holding us back. And we are here to present our plan to save the building. And let me tell you why. The first reason to save the Gilbert Building is the right thing to do. It's an historical gem, irreplaceable. It's a valuable part of our history and our future. It'd be the wrong thing to do in anger, and I would say unjust anger, misdirected anger, or panic to take this action. The building, as you'll hear from our engineer, Rob Fuzier, who was with Alliance and you met him in our last meeting, is not in imminent danger of collapse. It withstood Hurricane Barrel just fine and hasn't moved. He'll tell you more about that. As requested by the city, we've done everything that you asked us to do in the last meeting. Put up a fence around the property. We've made sure that it's secure. We've interviewed four or five different qualified contractors and took information from them. We've selected one. We've engaged engineers, good engineers, who have gotten the best input and advice from corresponding engineers in the country for buildings of this age. So I feel really strong about the team that we have. In spite of feeling that downtown has slid backwards in the last 20 years, particularly the last five or so, I believe we have a bright future downtown. We have a beautiful, in addition to that, it's important and you'll see some of this in your package. The Gilbert Building is a part of what we call our Bowie Street Project. It's a three-building project. If you would look around, particularly at night, and look at Bowie between Pearl and Orleans Street, it's probably the dirtiest, ugliest, scariest place in the city. We think it's going to be one of the most beautiful. You will see pictures of how the Gilbert Building looks today. You will see how it looked 100 years ago. And you will see a rendering of how we propose to make it look in the future. From the other side, what a lot of people refer to as the Tonahill Building, which was the original First National Bank building, we have another treasure. And you will see our vision to beautifully restore it for something phenomenal. So this project, this building, is not just about the Gilbert Building, although that's important enough. It's a key ingredient to our plan to reinvigorate our downtown area and our city with it. So before I get into the plan, I just want to say briefly, there's a whole lot I could say because I've got 40 years in the effort of moving our city forward. We've taken 14 buildings and totally renovated them and saved them from the wrecking ball. Of those 14, 10 of them were completely vacant when we took them over. The city wanted to destroy them. We have other buildings. We did those buildings and we started buying other buildings about 20 years ago. We thought the city would be more progressive. We thought there would be more support for what we want to do, which is to make a vital heart for our city downtown. We think that's so important to change our image, our self-image, our attitude, the way we view ourselves, the way outsiders view us, and it will have immeasurable benefits. And I've talked to probably every council member about this on numerous occasions, and you, Mr. Mayor, and I know you support that vision. But we've done more for downtown. I feel like kind of we're on trial here, which is really awkward because I know most of you and I know some of you well, and you know me. We've done more for downtown than any other group. Half of downtown that people know as and think of downtown wouldn't be here for our efforts. So I think on this subject, I have a little bit of credibility with this body. So our proposal is to save this historic building and to do it as quickly and safely as possible, which is what you ask and structurally sound. The building never had lateral supports. It had floor joists, which were not anchored to the wall, so they were never really designed. It had floor joists, which were not anchored to the wall, so they were never really designed as a support element. But our plan is with JTB, which you have the work program here, which is one of the most experienced firms in the state of Texas and nationally, is to go in carefully. First thing is going to be safety first in everything that we do. We're not going to make things worse. Our goal is zero injuries. Carefully start removing material and work our way up. And as we develop a floor, we're going to scaffold inside, which will provide two things, access and temporary structure. Once that finished, we intend to, we'll do another evaluation to add 65-foot beams on the 65-foot dimension to strengthen the envelope of the building even further. And we've submitted all of this to the building department. We have sent them a preliminary one and then a final one. We met with them for an hour and a half. We've gone through it in detail. They tell us they think it's a good and sound plan, and they support this plan. And the timeline, there may be some improvements on it, but I want to go back to what I said. Whenever there's a disaster, things can get worse, so we want to be very careful and deliberate about what we do. We think the first phase of it, the actual work of removing all of the damaged material and adding the scaffold is about 45 days of work. After that, we'll evaluate how many structural beams go in and place those in and have everything complete by January. So let me just mention a couple of other things to look through my materials. I'm not here to throw rocks. We have disagreement about safety and security and crime. I'm not here to talk about that. Want to talk about that at a later date. I'm here for the purposes of saving this building and saving the Bowie Street Project and moving downtown forward. We feel badly that any business downtown is hurt. I've brought hundreds of businesses here, a business consisting of 200 people and businesses consisting of two people. I've been an advocate for downtown, so it hurts me when that happens. But it wasn't our fault that this building burned. We had numerous meetings talking about these issues, and again, I'm going to stay away from that. We were the victim. Now, the shops in Mr. Randy's building, as he will tell you, they have no parking. But they have parking because we give it to them. Crockett Street remains open. Their customers have always parked on our parking lots for free. They didn't even ask us. Never asked us. That doesn't happen to me very often. Any parking that I use, I have to pay for. But we have worked with them, and I'm sure Randy would tell you that. So we will work with anybody who's hurt to help them in any way we can. Be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure there's some things I left off because I'm a little nervous.
Councilman Phil Shaw.
First of all, Mr. Flanagan, thank you for coming to the podium. I understand, you know, facing this, it's uncomfortable, and I appreciate you doing that. I appreciate the fact that you've been, and you said 40 years?
Yes, sir.
And I think one time you mentioned you've invested 40 million in downtown Beaumont?
Over.
Is that over 40 million? Okay. And I want you to know, I appreciate what you've done for our city. And I don't think anybody on this council wants to tear down a historical building. I don't think that's our goal at all. I think we want to save as many of these buildings as possible. But we feel as a council, we have a responsibility to the other citizens to protect them from a situation that's hazardous. So I guess my first question to the city manager and the staff, do we feel that the building at this point is safe? I know Mr. Flanagan feels that it is, but do we feel that the building is safe?
Councilman, before he answers, I did bring my engineer here.
Okay.
So I'm sure you're going to want to hear from him.
That'd be great.
I didn't want to cut.
No, 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 I hear you, and I'm happy to hear the engineer. But I'm just curious, where do we stand as a city? Is the building safe?
So on our engineering report that we procured, the recommendation was demolition. On page three of the interim structural restoration plan that Mr. Flanagan submitted says while clearing, the work is progressing in mid-October, a general assessment of the building stability and status of the adjacent street access can be performed. Knowing that, I can't say that this is safe or that it would not be a threat to life or public safety because the engineers have not said one way or the other. So to, so because I have not received a professional opinion or a recommendation, aside from the one that we've received on our very first structural engineer report, I'm not comfortable saying that this is sound and that my assessment remains for demolition.
Okay.
The passage that she's reading from, and I'll let Mr. Fuzier explain that, was at the juncture that after the demolition is completed and the scaffolds are added, how many sideways, I call them sideways, the 65-foot beams will have to be added at that time. We know we're going to have to add some, but until we have full access, she can't say, the city can't say, our engineers can't say how many, but we have a good idea.
Okay, let me ask you a few more questions, and then I know your engineer would like to come. How long have you owned the building?
I bought the building from the city. For anybody who doesn't know, vacant for 40 years. We didn't make it vacant. The city didn't want to do anything with it. We thought we were doing a good thing. Okay? At the time, I mentioned we were buying other buildings that nobody else wanted. That's what I've done. And I really thought the city would move forward about downtown, but instead, we fought for 20 years at each other's throats. And so the progress wasn't made. But I would say it's been going on 18 years now.
18 years?
That's a guess.
Okay. And again, city manager to the staff, the question I have, remind me, did we give Mr. Flanagan 60 days to get back to us with a plan? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
And do we feel like he's met our request? Are we satisfied with his response?
What we received was to shore the walls and essentially it would be restored back to pre-fire, essentially. So it still would have IPMC violations.
That's not correct.
So Mayor, if I could, and I'm only jumping in here because I know y'all have not had a chance to review what was submitted, and again, we just got it, I think, Friday evening. So obviously, staff has looked at it, but y'all have not had the ability. And I'm sure Mr. Flanagan and his engineer will enlighten us on what they've submitted. But I just wanted to kind of restate that, as y'all recall, back in June, there was a hearing that was reset, and council said, put up the fence, which Mr. Flanagan did, you know, the following week. And also, council asked that, you know, submit a work program. And the idea behind the work program, like our other buildings, is come up with a plan as to how to bring this up to the International Property Maintenance Code, what the timeline is. Usually, we have a timeline. And so, and again, I'm just going to give my quick take on what they've submitted. And again, Mr. Flanagan, of course, his engineer can correct me if I'm wrong, but what, the way I read this is, and if you look at the last page, there's the timeline, but it's a little bit hard to read kind of on the fly. But what I'm reading here is that the plan is to go ahead and do interior demolition of the building to begin to shore it up. But as I understand it, it is... Let me read it so I don't misstate anything. Well, the observations to date have not indicated a significant risk of imminent structural failure of the exterior walls. However, a conclusive statement regarding the building's structural integrity can only be made upon further examination facilitated by the upcoming clearing operation. So again, as I understand it, they're going to get in, gut out the floors, and do further assessment as to what they need to do, and that is in the October-November timeframe. At that point, again, as I understand it, they will make that assessment and decision as to whether or not to move forward with, and let me read the scope of the work in their document. The scope of the work will involve restoration of the original structural capacity of the exterior walls, roof, and three elevated floors, the details of which will be determined in the October-November timeframe. So again, the idea is for them to get in there, do the demolition, do the assessment in October-November timeframe, determine what that will be, and then make a decision whether or not to move forward with essentially shoring up what I just described in the scope of work, with the idea that that would be completed first week in January of 2025. So again, I just want to give you all my take on the summary of what was submitted.
May I comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, neither Mr. Boone or Ms. Eggman was at our meeting. We had a full discussion back and forth, and the folks that we met with, with the city were very much in support. We shook hands after the meeting, and they said they're supportive of moving forward. The passage that she's reading from is, as I described at the beginning. Once we get the scaffold up on a temporary basis and everything removed, and the building was not designed with lateral support, we're going to add, so when I'm talking longitudinal support, those are the beams that are remaining 125 feet long. Laterally are the 65-feet beams, okay? We're going to decide when and how many, sorry, how many and where they are placed. And I think that's the intelligent thing to do. I think any engineer would say that.
Mr. Flanagan, I, you know, one of the things that I look at is buildings downtown are different than, let's say, on Dallin because of the high concentration. So when your building is connected to my building, what you do in your building now impacts me. So if you don't secure your building, if, let's say, a homeless person goes and starts a fire, now your building catches on fire, it could catch my building on fire.
Mr. Phil Shaw, excuse me. Our building was secured.
Okay, well...
Our building was secured.
Okay, I'm just giving you a hypothetical.
I'd like to take that off the table.
Okay, we'll give...
It's not a hypothetical.
Okay.
Please.
All right.
There's been some misinformation by certain council members, a lot, and I've taken it. I want to bring it up to date.
Okay.
But that is misinformation.
Okay.
We had nothing to do with this fire, nothing that we did or nothing that we didn't do.
No, I never implied that it was your fault, but...
Please.
Okay. But downtown, when the buildings are connected, the state of your building now impacts my building, okay? It can, that's why downtown's different for me. So in this situation with the barricades and the city or the street closed, it's going to impact the businesses around you. And so as a council, how do we address that with them? How do we ask them to bear the burden of your situation? And that's one of the concerns we have, but...
All of their customers parked on my lot for free and still do.
Okay.
And still do. There is ample street access to any business that they have.
Okay.
And you can go down and see that. I had lunch at Crockett Street today. There were dozens of cars on the parking lot, and some of those cars were walking in to Mr. Lang's building. I'm a regular at his building.
Okay.
For Chucks.
And do you feel like all your buildings have been secured downtown? Because I've driven around and seen windows knocked out and some buildings not secured.
Answer is yes, but I will tell you this, since the fire, the night of the fire, two-plate gas windows, about half, about the size of the upper portion of that in the San Jacinto were knocked out the night of the fire. Police were too busy to come out, I understand that night. But since the fire, we've had 15 different violent cases of damage or intrusion. There was a break-in in the first city building, a robbery last week. Okay, that's not our building. So yes, we are constantly doing that, and we're committed to it. In the last meeting, you asked me if I was committed to the work program that the city put out, and I am.
Okay.
I have other things I would like to ask this city for security when we get the opportunity, but I'm willing, you said something earlier, everybody has to do their part. We're willing to do that, and I believe that's a true statement.
Well, and I agree with you 100% that I want the city and you to partner together with all the other property owners downtown, all of us working together, because I do appreciate the contribution you've made to downtown, and I do want us to partner together. I don't want you to see the city as being hostile towards you. I don't, that's not my intention at all. Your prosperity becomes the city's prosperity.
Appreciate that.
And so we want to work together.
And we want to do the same.
But again, we have to factor in all the other business owners and property owners. Again, because the high concentration, your building and the condition of it, whether it's broken windows or no fire alarm, no security system, whatever it may be, your building now could impact my building. And so that's my concern, and that's one of the things I look at.
I don't believe this building is in any danger of falling. I understand the council's concern, particularly Mr. Durio's concern about public safety, and we've been working diligently to tackle this issue in the right way, and we have a good plan to do it, and we're prepared to go to work.
Good. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Neal.
Mayor, all right, so my understanding last time was that we requested a plan to be brought back for us that basically shows what the next steps forward are. I don't think anybody was intending on the building to be demoed or all the miscellaneous demo that you had to do and the shoring up. We knew that it was going to take engineering studies to do that. It's my opinion that based off the information that he's provided with a timeline, that meets that. Like Councilman Phil Shaw said, I don't think anybody wants to tear the building down. My recommendation is, not knowing if he's going to finalize the deal or not, is to give him enough time to get to that next process, rather than rehashing this whole thing out on who's responsible for what. I mean, we said 60 days to go bring this to us, and then we'll go to the next steps. And I personally feel that's been provided.
And we want to, if any business is hurt, even though I feel like it's a trial for something we didn't do, but that happens to all of us, right? In life, okay, I'm big enough to handle that, all right? But if there's anything we can do with anybody that's been hurt from this, we've already been working with the shops across the street. I've had conversations with Mr. Lang. I believe he would say they may be overreacting, but that's his tenet. But I don't want anybody hurt. But we have to, we couldn't just start doing this the next day with the first contractor. We had to be deliberate about what we're doing. And we have a good plan, we're ready to move forward. If we can do it faster, we certainly will.
Well, Mr. Flanagan, I'd love to hear from your engineer. I mean, a real concern for me is opening up our roads, and I've heard what you said, but I am concerned about opening up our downtown roads and doing that safely. And also, when you mentioned complete in January, an understanding of where that complete is, because clearly, if the building is not secured and kids can get in the building or other things can happen, we want to create an environment where it is as safe as possible. But I guess the first question is really about the structural integrity of the building in terms of what your engineer has determined. And I know for us, we're looking up here to be able to make, you know, make a decision, and we certainly rely heavily on our city staff in doing that. We understand downtown. We understand the historic buildings and the value that they bring to our city and the hope for the future of that for our downtown. But again, if they, do they have anything to add to these reports, your engineer that you refer?
I think so, but I would like to say this, you know, people have a short memory, and the years go by fast, but when we did the Stedman Building, people said it'll never work, you can't do it. And it got done. When we did Crockett Street Entertainment District, people said it'll never work, you can't do it. District, people said it'll never work, you can't do it. The construction challenges were enormous, insurmountable, but we did it. We've done that on numerous occasions.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. I, I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I'd like to stay on this topic right now.
Okay, but I'm just saying, as, as a matter of getting things done.
I understand.
Track record.
Mayor, staff is prepared if council is entertaining, providing additional time or extensions to the property owner. His staff has prepared conditions to that effect. So I don't know if, based on Councilman Neal's comments, if you want to hear those right now, or if you want to hear from the engineer.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the engineer.
Mayor, council members, thank you for taking the time to hear my comments here. My name's Rob Fusier. I'm the president of Alliance Engineers. We are a multidisciplined engineering company here in downtown Beaumont, office in 470 Arling's. We have been contracted by the, by the building owner to provide certain structural engineering services with the idea of understanding the structural stability of the building and help Mr. Flanagan put together plans to restore the, the structure down the road as it, as, as appropriate. One of the key things as, as I hear the discussion that I think everybody needs to understand is there's no such thing as a stable building or an unstable building necessarily. There's degrees of stability. So this is kind of engineer-y, and I apologize for that, but that building is currently stable. It's, it's not moving. Now, what will it do under certain external loads, like, you know, an earthquake or some live loads, equipment being installed in the building and stressing the building, that, then you start talking about, well, what's the stability in those cases? So the difficult thing for us right now is to determine what is the nature of the structure. We've been able to do external laser scans. Mr. Flanagan contacted us, I think, the morning after the fire and put us right to work that weekend to do that laser scan to determine the displacements, the movement of the, of the building's external walls. The issue there, though, is that we don't have original drawings for the building. We don't know to what degree the construction, the original construction of the building was, and so we were able to analyze the building against a perfect cube of a building to basically see, you know, are those walls displaced significantly from the vertical plane? We submitted that report to you guys back in June or whenever, and our observation was that there was no significant displacement from the vertical. Also, when you, when you do a visual inspection of the outside, there are some cracks in the, in the masonry. Those cracks could likely have been there for a lot, a lot of years. You walk around any city with old masonry buildings and you'll see cracks. So we didn't, we couldn't come up with anything that said the building was at that point in imminent danger of, of failure. Mr. Flanagan then instructed us to continue the, the work, and we did internal drone visual inspections of the building to determine, again, what, what is the nature of the construction, because we, we don't have those original drawings. And we've determined that it's a stacked masonry bearing wall construction. Basically, you, you build a wall by stacking up a bunch of heavy brick, and then you, you put the floors in within those, within those walls. That doesn't quantify the stability of the building or its load-bearing capacity. It just, you know, that's just how the building's built. So we need to get more information with more close inspection of the interior of the building facilitated, again, by the, by the clearing operation that Mr. Flanagan described earlier. So within a week or two of the contractor mobilizing and clearing and shoring, our engineers will get in there and start measuring and quantifying the structure of the building so that we can then model the building, expose it to the code or whatever the requirements are that the city has, expose it to those loads, and quantify that the building is or is not stable under those acceptable loads. So that's, that's a long way to say, is it stable or is it not? It's obviously stable. It hadn't fallen. A little bit better. It, it obviously has a degree of stability. It was exposed during a barrel to somewhere in the range of 30 to 40 mile an hour winds, primarily from the south, but also from the east and the west, not so much from the north. We personally did visual inspections after that event and saw no, no displacement on the building. So there's some level of stability there that's proven through, through experience. So a lot of words there about, about stability. The, the way we get to a judgment about stability is to do the measurements. The only way we do the measurements is to get in the building, same way that the demo or clearing contractor is going to do it. We're going to get in there and measure and do an analysis and be able to provide to the city, to, to, to the owner and to the city detailed, quantified, a statement of stability of the building.
Councilman Getz, then Councilman Felschel.
So like Councilman Felschel, I would love to be able to see the building restored. Also, like Councilman Felschel, my immediate concern is for the businesses across the street, the residents that live across the street, the hundreds of people from ExxonMobil that are having to go roundabout way to leave downtown in their job because of the barricaded street. I would like to hear the requirements that the city would impose if we were to give you additional time, if that's possible.
So I'm going to turn it over to Demi, but my office did prepare a backup ordinance in the event that this happened, because I'm a Girl Scout and I come prepared. So obviously, the conditions are based on what planning, community development, and our building officials came up with, but obviously, council has the ability to add or attract from that. Demi, I'm sorry, Director Eamon, did you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, so I can read some of the conditions. Should council decide to extend time, I do want to make it clear that staff does recommend demolition. However, granted this extension of time, condition number one being the exterior walls, roof, and elevated floors shall be restored to their original structural capacity as identified by structural engineer registered in the state of Texas and completed within 150 days, no later than January 10th, 2025. The property owner shall obtain all applicable permits. Requests for extensions of time shall be reviewed by the city council. Condition number two, the property owner shall submit a restoration progress report to the building official every 60 days to ensure substantial progression occurs until the building complies with all codes and ordinances. The property owner shall appear before city council on the next available agenda after January 10th, 2025, to report any findings or progress during restoration of the Gilbert Building and disclose intent to make all necessary repairs to comply with the 2021 International Property Project. That would be 142 days. So that's why I'm recommending 150, just to, in case there's an eight-day leeway to make any kind of improvements. Of course, if he needs an extension of time, that won't be granted by staff, but we will bring it before y'all for consideration.
To that point, also, the work programs, our traditional work programs for red tech structures are also given the same, 150 days, and are granted extensions reasonably based on substantial compliance or how far they are into the project. So it's consistent with our current practice.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Getz.
There is some assumed risk with that.
I will ask, I believe on your timeline, is it January 9th, 2025 for the street to open, or is it before then?
There's one decision point in, I think it's late October, where once we get in the building, we may find that it is stable, sufficient to meet the, the city requirements. So there's an opportunity in, say, middle October for that to happen. And then if that doesn't happen then, then by the, the time that we've completed structural restoration, that's.
So. Under this proposed ordinance, Councilman Turner, to answer your question, based on his response, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to call you, keep calling you the engineer. What was your name again?
Rob Fusier.
Rob Fusier, and Rob Fusier's response, the 60-day requirement for the property owner or Mr. Flanagan to provide an update will be included in that study. Essentially, they would, that would give them enough time to have done that, if that's something that council wants to know. So they would either essentially come to council and say, we've done, we've done that study, and this is where we stand, and provide an updated engineering recommendation or study.
Yeah, well, the state-approved engineer, my concerns was the, you know, conflicting reports with the timelines. I was, you know, really concerned with getting that street back opened up, but I just want to make sure we're secure in doing so. That's why I want to see from both perspectives where we are exactly.
Councilman Getz and Councilman Felschel.
So again, our concern would be public safety in getting those streets open. One thing that could happen adverse to the city is if the building were to collapse and we had opened the street and it fall on a pedestrian or a car driving down the street, which would result certainly in, in probably some form of litigation. One of the ways that the city can protect against those types of contingencies is through an insurance policy. I'll defer this to Ms. Reed, but, you know, would it be possible as a condition of this to require some sort of insurance or indemnification that would name the city as an additional insured, or in some way protect the city in the event that some calamity were to occur? I'm cognizant of your statements that it survived a hurricane, and, you know, we don't reasonably think that that's going to happen, but we also have to be proactive and protect the city against potential liability. So what do you think, Ms. Reed?
I think a reasonable compromise would be to, if you're looking or if they're interested, but again, their, their engineer has suggested, Ms. Flanagan's engineer has suggested that the, the barricades remain in place until such time as they've been able to assess the structural integrity of the building. If they're asking to remove it for financial reasons and he wants to obtain an insurance policy and the city, the city is an additional insured, I mean, that's an option, but I think, I'm not giving him legal advice, but there's a guy with a degree.
No, I want you to give us legal advice.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm saying, like, there's, there, there are guys with degrees, folks, you know, that, that do this for a living that said, don't do that. That's where our liability comes in, is that we hired someone and they said the street should remain closed. He hired someone and said the street should remain closed. So having, having an insurance policy that indemnifies the city, I mean, yeah, they'll pay out on it, but it's still not.
I don't know if that would even be possible, but.
Excuse me, I, I'm going to interrupt at this point. We're going to take a five-minute recess because this has been a long time for council, and they hadn't been able to take any breaks. And people don't want to miss the conversation. So we'll, we'll shoot back for five minutes.
Road needs to stay closed, we're saying.